Good evening, one and all. It's Monday, October 15th, 2024. It's time for the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority Meeting for October. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I have no specific welcome and/or opening remarks, other than our next meeting is scheduled for December. We will not have a November meeting unless we need it, but that's not on the horizon yet. Announcements. I have none. Anybody on the board have announcements? Not hearing any. We'll move right to our consent agenda, which contains a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Hello, Charles. A motion to approve all bills and payrolls as presented. And a motion to approve the August 12 minutes of our meeting at that time. Does anybody have any questions on the agenda? How about bills and payrolls? Minutes. I have one, but does anybody have any? Sorry, Karen.
No.
If you can go to page two.
Oh.
All right. And you go down, payments received, the last paragraph. I'd like to make a couple suggestions.
Where are we?
It begins with coordinator English updated the authority and a few selected property deeds related. Can we say related to Stevens Run?
Okay.
And then parentheses, leave that there. Cross out currently and say also known as the Tiber.
Okay.
Okay. And then, end parentheses, then using the location of the property pins, blah, 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 blah. And then the third line is, and specifically noted as the Tiber and not Stevens Run. I think that was the point because it's inconsistent in the deeds over the years.
Okay.
What's the back and forth between Tiber and Stevens Run. That's all. Everything else looked good to me. Any other questions? Comments? Edits? If not, since this is a consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept approval of the agenda minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Thank you very much. We'll move right on. Public comment. Not seeing any public, no comment. Special presentation, we have the 25, 2025 budget. Charles, I'll turn it over to you. And we have documents in front of us and documents that have been sent to us. So hopefully, we can cut through this in relatively good order.
Yeah, so let me preface this in that this year, we moved to meetings every other month.
Correct.
So if we stick to that schedule, the next time we meet will actually be in December. Depending on how far we get into the conversation tonight, whether or not you like this proposed budget or not, but if you want to talk a little bit more about it, we might need to think about scheduling a special meeting for that purpose. Because this budget weighs heavily on the Borough Council's budget as well, as we know they're intertwined very closely.
Correct.
So we don't want to scuttle that effort if we can help not to. It took some time to put together an Excel spreadsheet to give you historical reference points for budgets over the past six years, six year, including the proposed budget for The high level points there is actually on the last page, bottom right column in the dark blue. You'll see that we're proposing a 13.18 increase in expenses, and that's largely due to a lot of the projects we have currently in the pipeline. High level view of the green column there, proposed 2025. You'll note, from a revenue perspective, we are forecasting half of what we normally would expect to recoup in one year. If you remember, we've had preliminary conversations about the rates, rules, and regulations with altering the current schedule of July to July and start billing our stormwater fees on a calendar basis to coincide with the council's annual budget, which is a calendar year budget.
Right. So we would be in concert with them.
Correct. But it'll take 18 months to get there.
Right.
So this envisions billing July 1 through December 31, 2024, at half of the ERUs that would normally be assessed. And then in January 1 of 2026, we would bill again for the full year of ERUs.
You meant 25, but that's okay. July 25.
We will bill half a year, starting in July 2025.
Right.
Which would go through December 31, 2025, and then bill January 1, 2026.
Correct.
For a full.
Right.
ERUs. Yep. The other sheet document is the detail version of those numbers. So you can see, broken down by department and by object number, what we anticipate to collect in revenue, and then, of course, what we would propose to spend in expenses. From a staffing perspective, there's not a lot of changes there, other than your typical, you know, 3%, 4% increase on salary line items and the authority's portion of payroll taxes and benefits. As we get down into the later part of, and stop me wherever, if ever, you want to ask about something, we can go through these after I finish my thoughts here. You'll see that we have itemized computer software fees, things of that sort. As you know, we're going to be moving to a new billing software in the next year. That's reflected there as well. You'll see on 7/20, the capital projects that are currently in the pipeline, Bream Alley Wall Construction, and then a conversation we should have with Robbie related to the purchase of a skid loader to clean out the Tiber. And that would be a shared expense between the authority and the borough. All said and done, even with a half-year assessment, we're looking at a slight deficit in expenditures exceeding revenues by about just under $300,000. That is okay, because we have money banked in the bank to cover those expenses. We can, I'll talk a little bit more about that in my formal report after we bounce some of these ideas around. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay. Thank you. Kurt?
Well, Charles, what is the protocol to change the billing year? Do we need to send that on to the Borough Council, or what?
No. No, that's a decision you make as a representative of the authority.
Okay.
We would need a formal amendment to the rates, rules, and regulations.
Correct.
Which we've previously talked about at a prior meeting. No urgency to do that before the end of the year, per se, because the next billing cycle doesn't begin until July.
Until July.
But I would suggest, if ultimately, the authority would like to move in that direction, make that decision in the beginning of the year, so that we can have enough time to advertise to the rate payers that this change is coming. And obviously, we'd put something like that in the newsletter, which would go out in April.
Right.
It seems like you're budgeting with that intent already, so.
Yeah, because we've talked about it, and generally, heads were nodding in the same direction.
Right.
But if you want to move a different direction, you need to let me know, and I can resell.
Right. I think that's my first takeaway with this, Kurt, is that if we approve this budget, we're also approving the change in the billing, period.
Exactly.
Right. So they would go hand in hand.
Yep. And just one other question, as a new guy on the budget, since you're projecting a shortfall, and I heard we have money to cover, are we also, do we consider rate changes?
Great point. And I'm glad you mentioned this, because I forgot to mention it in my opening remarks. This budget is built on the dissolution of the 2%. So the idea here is, you treat this like a regular utility, like your water bill, where you pay at par or 10% penalty. So that would be the thought. And that would build in, it would build in a light, a little bit of a rate increase, but the tiniest one possible.
So everybody will pay, even if they pay now at the discount, they'll pay the full amount?
Yeah. So if you're currently one ERU and paying at the discount, you're paying $98, you'd be paying $100.
Okay.
Right. And we have not had a discussion about whether we should increase our rates over that.
That's correct.
And, you know, I think we should have that discussion at some future point, only because it's been five years since we set these rates. We've not increased anything at all. Inflation is going up, and I'm looking at Robbie, because I've had enough discussions, and Chad, about the costs involved with, forget about hourly rates and labor, just the cost of materials.
Yeah.
How that skyrocketed. So that's for a future time. But, and Karen, could you put that on the list of things to discuss for the future? And maybe Deb can do the same thing, because it would obviously impact the three Rs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rates, rules. Okay.
One thing to keep in mind, and this is probably a discussion for if and when you make the formal leap, to go to a revised billing cycle, but it's something that should be factored in now, as we're kind of moving down that path, perhaps. For your half-year kind of stutter-step bill cycle.
Right.
When are you going to want that due? Because historically, we had a one-year payment deadline. And we changed that to six months, because people were getting confused, because they were getting their bill in January.
Right.
They were paying it, and then they would get a lien, a 30-day lien letter, and they'd say, well, I just paid it. Well, the lien was for the prior year. So we shortened that to six months. If we go with six months, it's fine, but we're going to have that situation that we tried to avoid, where people are going to be getting a bill.
Again.
It'll be a different amount, because it'll be the full year versus the half, but we may want to think about the timing of when it's due.
Mm-hmm.
Just to cut down on further confusion.
Okay. And Deborah, I would entertain, not now, but your thoughts on this as well, when that's, when that makes sense for that to be due. Because you're the person who's doing the daily operations on it. Okay. I know I have a couple of questions, but anybody, let's start the questions from left, from my left to right. Any questions on this budget?
I'm okay right now.
John?
Not at this time.
Okay. I have one thing on page, this is page seven of nine, where we talk about, where we talk about expenditures. I saw legal expenses.
Oh, boy.
But what that segued me to was actually the borough, because later, we're going to talk about Stevens Run, the Tiber, and what that means. And I just want to kind of underscore, we don't own anything, and if we proceed with the Stevens Tiber projects, as we do our research, there's going to be some, there are some legal expenses involved. And I wonder, on the borough side, if they're prepared, if we push ahead, Charles, because you do that work, whether they're ready to see a big legal bill with this, because we're pushing it off to them.
I'll just add it to their $900,000 hole already, so.
Yeah. Okay. But, because our legal expenses seem reasonable here, based on what we've done in the past. And I'm not saying that we won't have some legal expense, but I think the lion's share is going to be the borough.
Yeah, you're right. Object 314, the expenses, $70,750 is what we typically would spend in half a year on routine legal expenses. I think you're right in that the borough should probably take the bulk, if not all, of the research needed for Stevens Run. Deed restrictions and deed research and things of that sort.
Clarifications of agreements that have occurred in the past.
Yeah. I have no idea what that would cost, off the top of my head, and I don't think you would either, Adam.
Not really. No. But I, I mean, it's not my decision, but I would agree, that's probably more of a borough.
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, they own it, they're responsible for it, and frankly, they're better equipped to pay it.
Yeah. Well, here's a little bit of a historical aside. So there was a meeting in here before, so I went upstairs and was wandering around, and I looked at the 1888 map.
Oh.
Of the borough. Like everybody, when they have a chance, go look at it and see how many structures are near Stevens Run. Like, maybe a handful. Maybe a handful. So that's just an aside, an interesting aside, but a lot of development has occurred in this borough since the late 1800s. And because some of those houses are, you know, turn-of-the-century houses that are along that stream. And the borough allowed it. God bless them. And they had their reasons, I'm sure. Okay. I had one other issue, and that is this piece of equipment, this mini skid loader. I think if we decide to agree to this, it's on the next page, by the way, eight of nine. I think it's a good piece of equipment to have, because we can't get large pieces of equipment in that, in that channel. But in doing so, at least my opinion is, if we pay for half of this, we're paying a lot, given that the use of that in the stream, and we'll talk about permitting later. How do I put this? Maybe the most cost-effective way is just to rent. Okay? But it's usually, we can't get it when we want it, we can't keep it as long as we want to, and it becomes a real burden on Robbie and his crew. I would just say that if we put $26,834 in it, I don't think the Stormwater Authority should have to pay a cent for maintenance or anything else on it. We're partners, but the borough would take care of everything else, because I'm sure other entities would want to use this piece of equipment, because it's sort of unique. But I think we make the capital investment and say, go for it. We don't want to see a bill on anything else.
Well, once we, if we purchase it, I see we've been lending or getting equipment from other municipalities, too. Do we turn around and rent it out to other municipalities and make it revenue generating?
I'll leave it to Robbie and Charles, especially Robbie, to answer that.
Robbie can talk about the agility program.
Yeah, so through the agility program, we don't rent out equipment to other municipalities. We share equipment. And unfortunately, now the surrounding townships have a piece of equipment like this, so.
They'll be glad we buy it for them, then.
Well, a lot of times, like Cumberland Township and Strabane and Mount Pleasant, they're not going to have a need for that.
Okay.
They won't.
Their stuff's bigger.
Yeah, a lot bigger.
Right.
Okay.
Right. But someone will, and I'm sure, once they find out how handy this thing is, they may, they may change their tune on some things, too, Rob, but we'll see. But those are my comments on the budget.
I had a, just one on that. My eyes went to that 7/20 as well. And without knowing how insurance works on something like a mini skid loader, and connected to this topic of legal fees, not to jinx anything, but if that skid loader was being used and something happened, what would the impact be for the Stormwater Authority? If you're cleaning Stevens Run, and then something like the wall falls down, or something like that?
Nothing to the authority, because it'll become a borough-owned.
Okay.
Equipment, so.
Even if we, if we've purchased it?
You're sure.
Or half of it.
You're not purchasing.
We're not going to purchase it.
We're donating toward it.
We're donating toward it.
Right.
That's all.
Yeah. Good way to explain that. We're making a donation toward it, and you will pick up everything else from there.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on what's being proposed here for 2025? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Which means we don't need another meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. I think a lot of us have done our homework, probably everybody on this, so those are the questions. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we accept the proposed 2025 budget as presented by the, by Charles.
So I'm going to suggest that you probably want a resolution, a formal, like, budget resolution for that.
Yeah.
But I think as long as you're indicating that you're going to accept this budget, you're okay.
Yeah, I think, for now, I just need to know that if you're in agreement, I'll bake these numbers into the council's budget, and then everything will be adopted on the same night in December.
Okay, great. And so Karen, make sure that's on the next agenda, that we have a resolution that accepts it. Okay?
And sets your rates for next year and does all that at the same.
Right. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any? It passes. So Charles, you can check the box there.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. If Pat's not here, so what happens if he has a question about it?
Well, Pat's not, go ahead. I'll defer to you. I'll come up and answer.
They're not enacting this tonight.
Oh, okay.
They're just basically saying, acknowledged, received, we're accepting this proposed budget, but they're not officially adopting it, and they're not going to do that until December. So if he has any questions, they can do that, but.
He can certainly bring it up in December.
Absolutely.
And we can entertain that. But normally, Karen, if someone's not here at a meeting, let's say, Pat doesn't make next meeting, then what's done is done. We'll vote, and that's it on the resolution. If you're absent, it's kind of tough luck.
Well, and.
Absent, you're absent.
Right.
Yeah. Also, all four of you agreed with it, so.
Right. So there's a majority, so, without question. Okay. Next, if there are no other questions, let's move to financial updates. Our revenue and expenses, Charles.
Yeah, so year-to-date for 2024, you have this, this year-to-date revenue versus expenses report was sent to you prior to the meeting tonight. We are on target. We have collected just over $496,000 year-to-date, spent just under $210,000, which leaves us with a surplus year-to-date of $287,000. That is on top of the good news of the money in the bank. And the ACMB Bank checking account, as of the 7th of October, $361,000. $330 of that, just so you know, is getting ready to be transferred to the borough.
I'm just going to add, yeah. So we'll be down to $30,000.
Correct. However, we also have $630,000 sitting in Pliget, and both of the, all three of those term investments mature in the middle of November.
November.
Right. So from a liquid cash perspective, we're in good shape.
Can I, since we will not have a meeting in November, can Charles and I talk about reinvesting as we go forward?
Sure.
I'm kind of looking at the board to say.
Yeah.
So we'll look at our cash needs.
Yep.
And then, we may not be investing the entire $600 and some odd thousand, but enough to, I'm looking at Chad, to cover bills that we are projecting, at least for the next six, eight months.
So the one for $236,000 matures on November 4th.
Uh-huh.
Just under three weeks from, well, three weeks from yesterday. Maybe that's what we could use for monthly expenses. There are two that, and by the way, incidentally, that matures at a rate of 5.41%, which is a very favorable rate. There are two others that mature on the 15th of November at 5.22%. Those combined will be $405,000.
So it looks like we could safely invest $300,000 to $400,000.
Easily.
For the next six, eight months.
Right.
Are the Pliget rates staying about the same?
They are. Today's rate, Pliget, Pliget Prime would be, the investment category is at 4.99. That's the highest that they're offering at the moment.
Okay. Great. Okay, so we can, we can talk about that, you and I, in November. Yes?
Trying to recall, last time we talked about this, there was a motion, I think, delegating some discretion, but I can't recall specifically what that was. That was a number of months ago.
Right. I think we had a resolution, I think.
Yeah, so we could be nimble.
Yes.
Yep.
And do exactly what we're trying to do now, without having a meeting and doing all that. So if you could check that, to make sure, you know, everything is good from that perspective.
The, so right now, these are, the ones that we talked about are actually terms. So if we were cash was in, there would be a penalty. Pliget Prime is not term, it's just a preferred rate, so it's all liquid at all the time.
So it's like a money market.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then you can look at whether it's a six-month CD or some other.
But even the CDs were not at 4.99, of today's communications, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we might be just better off leaving it.
Leaving the money market.
Right.
Interesting.
Yeah, I was surprised by that, too. CD rates are about 10th lower.
Deal curve is changing.
Yep.
I'm waiting to see the election.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Any other questions? Payments received, Deb? Quick update on that?
We are now in the delinquent phase as of September 30th, so that adds 10% to all of the bills that are remaining. We have roughly about. We have roughly about $70-some thousand outstanding. We did receive a few payments this week. So I guess we'll need to talk to Adam about sending out our 30-day notice, our final notice. In the past, when we first started the program, we would send out a reminder notice, but I think most people are aware of the bills and that would, it would cost approximately around $52 to send out a mailing with the remaining folks that haven't paid. The final notice would still give them 30 days to make those payments. And then we usually get about half back and then the remaining half around 30, 30-some, 27 to 30 folks end up getting a lien.
Yeah, so for the benefit of Kurt, because I don't think you've been, been here when we've done this, some years, the Authority, well, I'll back up and I'll tell you what we have to do and I'll tell you what we've done over and above what we have to do. Before we can file a lien, once people are through the delinquent phase, well, they're in the penalty phase, once they enter the delinquent phase, they're past the due date, past the 10%, before we can file a lien against them, we have to give them a 30-day notice letter via certified and first-class mail. And then if they haven't paid after that, we always give them a few extra days and then we start to file liens. What Deborah was alluding to is some years, we've also sent almost like a postcard reminder, you know, you're late.
Yeah.
I think in November typically, saying, you know, you're, you're late, you're delinquent, this is how much you owe, plus 10%. Pay up or we have the ability to file a lien against you in the future. There's a cost associated with the mailing, but there's costs associated with filing liens too.
Does that yield results, that postcard?
I think it did.
Probably maybe like 25 to 30%, but most wait till they get the final notice.
Typically, it has remained remarkably consistent.
Yes.
Over, over the years. I've been surprised. We send out those 30-day letters, about 80 or 90 of them. And we file about 40 liens. I don't know that we've ever filed fewer than 30 or more than 45. It's stable. And then if those liens filed, roughly half of them paid within a month. And then the others just roll over and eventually hopefully drop off as people refinance and sell and get foreclosed on. And we've had some of each of those.
Right.
So I guess the question is whether we want to do the extra mailing to try to cut down on subsequent mailings slash lien filings. Speaking purely on a personal level, the 30-day letter gets a response, maybe you cut down on the future mailings, but I hesitate to think that anybody would blow off a certified 30-day lien letter, but take the postcard mailing seriously.
Correct.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
I agree.
Right, I, I agree too. I think we've been really nice in the past, but it hasn't yielded tremendous results. But the certified letter does. So I think we just go with the certified.
No more Mr. Nice Guy.
Well, I'm guessing that the postcards are probably 90% the same people every year.
They have quite a few.
Okay, so we'll dispense with that and move on, okay. You have a lien filed report at 2023?
I have nothing to report, yeah. And we haven't had any, many payoffs lately either, yeah.
Okay.
Nothing to cover beyond what we just did.
Okay, it's time for Chad and engineering updates. And we're going to talk about the Washington Street project, the Gill Phase, was it B2B? To be or not to be?
That is, that is the question. So there is a motion on your agenda that I took the liberty of drafting, should you be interested in passing this? And notice in the motion that I put two words there, approve or deny. So you would pick which one you want. You can't do both, obviously. So, so, and the reason I start by saying that is because the decision that's at hand here is not a shall or a must, it's a should. And I'll explain a little bit as we go here. I put in front of you all a, a two-page document that kind of describes what we're talking about. There's, there's a few houses, it's six properties along Washington Street, where we are working on replacing water services. So there's cuts into the existing sidewalk. You can see the pictures on the backside where those cuts have already occurred. Cuts into the sidewalk. While we were doing it, we started taking a look at the fact that we have these little channels that take the water from the roof leaders across the surface of the sidewalk that we've been trying to eliminate. Now, this piece of this project, let me just go back a little bit. This part of the project was not originally part of the Gettysburg Interloop. It was an extension of the water line. Once we decided that we had to move, in order to build the storm drain, we had to move the water line. Once we decided to build the water line, GMA asked that we moved, that we take the water line all the way down to the creek. So now we're in a location while we're down near the creek, Stevens Run, where we are tying these, these new water services in. So again, this is a project that kind of, you pull back the layers of the onion and it's where do you stop type of a thing. So I felt like I would be remiss if I didn't at least bring it to your attention that we have sidewalks that we're doing work in and we currently in the project do not have called for replacement of these little sidewalk gutters that take the water from the roof leaders. So the question came, should we just replace all of the sidewalks instead of just patching the sections that we tore out?
Right.
There are some advantages of the fact that we are repaving the entire street. So whenever you replace curbs and sidewalks, you have to cut back into the street. That wouldn't be an additional expense here. We're already going to do it not one way or the other. There's also the expense of, of mobile, or maintenance of traffic. So on the front sheet, side of the sheet, you can see a red number there. I put a line through the flagging, item number eight. There's a questionable, that $15,000 there is potential savings that we wouldn't have to spend if we can fit this in while they're doing other work in this project.
Right.
So that knocks the price down from $82,000 to $69,000. So if you take $69,000 for what we're calling is somewhat a stormwater improvement, it's also somewhat a sidewalk improvement. So the way that I was thinking this through in my head without splitting hairs is that it would be 50% Stormwater Authority, 50% Borough expense. So in the motion, again, there's a number 33,000. That's just 69,399 divided by two is approximately that $33,000. I was trying to round to a, to a whole number that I thought made sense. Then the Borough would pick up the balance. This is, again, this is based on estimated quantities and, so, so all of this will be figured out along, in the wash whenever we pay the final bill. To the, to the Borough, it'll come down to a, you know, right down to the cents at the end of this project. To the Stormwater Authority would be exactly 33,000. Because you would be making that your new, your new contribution to the project and then the Borough would pay the balance of whatever that is. I think the only other, so in that first sheet there, I did give you some, some language there to discuss the justification of some ADA compliance things that go along with replacement sidewalks. There's also, the other thing that I wanted to note, in the first picture, the top-left picture, you can see a roof leader coming out of the side of the house, a little white pipe. It's actually a sump pump. And where that discharges into the alley right there, the alley actually start, it sinks and you had to put in cold patch from time to time. It's not a major issue, but there is, this would be the opportunity to also fix this issue with the icing of the alley. That's actually Delap Avenue is where that comes out there. And replacing the alley crossing at the same time. The alley crossing is the Borough's alley crossing. The sidewalks that cross an alley is the Borough's, although the rest of the sidewalks would be private properties otherwise.
Right.
So again, this is, this is kind of one of those things where this is a golden opportunity to do all of the sidewalks, but it is not a shout. This is not a project that has to be done. There's nothing that is making you complete this part of the project. It's just a question. Again, I would be remiss if I didn't bring to your attention all of the discussions that we've had about these little gutters and the fact that they're not ADA compliant. It would be, I felt like I would be remiss if I didn't bring it to your attention and say, hey, there's an opportunity here if you want to take care of a, half of a block of these things. I will pause there for.
Questions? Yes, Kurt?
So I have a question and it's more philosophical, I guess. It's my understanding, at least as a resident of the Borough, that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house. So if we were to do this and the Borough or the Stormwater Authority pays for that, does that set a precedent for other property owners that I should get my sidewalk replaced by the Borough?
It's a fair question. I'm not sure if I'm positioned to answer. Maybe open that to the board.
I'm just.
I'll give you my opinion. Go ahead, John.
Well, I'm just going to say in the past, when we've done, Columbia Gas has done sidewalk jobs and other utilities and the Borough's been involved, they've been replaced. So your question's not new.
Okay.
It comes up almost every time they get involved in things like this. This is a fairly long stretch, but there have been longer stretches where, especially when the gas company has done repair work, they've replaced old blocks because they didn't want to patch down the middle of sidewalk. Leave the legal argument up to the solicitor. If I was one of the property owners, I'd be thankful. If I lived next door and mine wasn't done, I'd be pissed. So.
Of course. Yep.
And I would agree with you, John. Is it any sort of binding precedent that there's, you know, somebody can point and say the Borough has assumed responsibility for everyone. I don't think that's going to hold water. Is there the potential for a lot of whining and talking points as to why did the Borough slash Stormwater Authority pay for that? And you're not paying for me? I think there is very likely potential for that. But are you boxing yourselves in or boxing the Borough in, in a legal sense? No, I don't think you are. It's essentially a political decision.
Okay.
In my opinion.
I would agree that there is not, that there already is a precedent, like John said, that when there are construction projects on sidewalks because of utilities, we have great beautiful stretches of new sidewalk that the property owner didn't pay for. So if there is a precedent, it is that, that it already exists. So I would be very supportive of this, given what you just said about golden opportunity.
Yeah, my, my comment is, I, my first reaction was, hell no, what are we paying for? And then, you know, when you get into this and you look at the picture, and I'm very familiar with this piece of property. In fact, I bought it for the college in the 90s. And these ADA, these are ADA issues too, that I think the Borough and, and the Stormwater Authority by default have to recognize that it's probably part of our responsibility to get rid of these darn things whenever we can. And that sump pump, because I'm familiar with walking the dog through there, I mean, that is an icing problem in the winter. That sump pump is an icing problem. So I, I think by supporting it, we, we're doing the right thing. Could we get blowback? You bet. And I wouldn't be surprised if we did. But it's the right thing to do, I believe. And they're in there. I do want to say something about the numbers though, Chad. Why is there a mobilization? They're already mobilized.
There is logistics with the, with this piece of project that they built into the mobilization costs. It's not necessarily just to pay for dropping a piece of equipment off. It's stakeout, it's the additional insurance, it's all of that other soft cost. They build that into that mobilization number. There's no other, there's no other line item to build all of those.
Okay, I'm used to seeing other terms, but that's fine. That's the overhead of getting it done.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
And maybe, maybe I'll also take an opportunity, I try not to get too far into the weeds with these things, but whenever you have a block of sidewalks like this, one of the things that we always talk about is that the curb reveal. There's only like a four-inch curb reveal there. So in order to be able to bring the roof leaders out underneath the sidewalks, you got to go to at least six inches, maybe eight inches. It would be preferred. And if there was parking and you have a Corvette and the door's going to hit in your parking, then you can stick with six inches, but.
That's correct.
But, but the point I'm making is you, it would be really hard to do that one property at a time. So all of these sidewalks are a little bit over, they're like 4% cross slope. ADA compliance is 2%. So by lessening the cross slope, we can increase the curb reveal. And if you did one, only one property had a curb reveal, then you would have this up and down thing with the sidewalk. So the fact that when you're doing a half a block, then again, it's that golden opportunity. You can do the entire half a block, get all of the curb reveal up, make all of the sidewalks ADA compliant. It would, will this ever happen if each one of these property owners did this individually ever again for the next 100 years? Probably not.
Well, the, the other comment I have then, do the owners understand that that first step is going to be decreased?
No, the step won't, the step, the elevation of the step, we're going to try to maintain.
Okay.
It's the elevation at the curb that comes up.
Okay.
Because right now, it's over, it's like 4%. We want to make it 2%, so you're just bringing the curb up.
Okay.
But the elevation at the step should stay real close.
The whole pad was going to come up, but no, okay.
It almost looks like where that crack is going down, that the front sections where they dug out have more of a slope in the back.
It does. The back, the back half is real close to 2%.
So you can get it.
The front half is more like 4%.
You can get to 2%.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion. Well, here is the motion. Anyone interested in proposing this motion? I will read it. If we need to motion to, I will say approve the modification of the MOU with the Borough of Gettysburg for the North Washington Street Water and Storm Sewer Project to increase the contribution by $33,000 for improvements described in the draft contract change order number two associated with improving roof leader channels and sump pump discharge locations between 125 and 135 North Washington Street, contingent on the approval of the Borough Council of the Contract Change Order Number Two to the North Washington Street Water and Storm Contract with York Excavating Company. So moved? So moved, okay. Second?
Second, but I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Chad, would it be appropriate to mention ADA in there because actually this is going to make the sidewalk ADA compliant also?
It would, and we can certainly modify the motion to include that.
I think we should.
I don't have an opinion.
Just because I try not to live in the past, but I spent many years dealing with ADA in this town and.
So it's, it's incorporated by reference, if that's okay with you. We say it's described in the, in the draft change order. So what you see here on the document is the exact justification right from the change order.
Okay.
And that does say ADA compliance in there. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
That it's incorporated by reference?
Okay, okay. Then we'll make no more modification to the motion, okay? It is proposed. Is there a second?
I think there was.
Second?
John's second.
John's second, okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Not hearing any? This motion passes. Thank you very much, Chad. And now on to Lincoln Highland John's master plan update.
And if I could make one more point before we move on, so the motion was contingent on the Borough Council's approval as well.
Exactly.
Should they not want to move forward with this on their end, then your motion fails and we're back to not doing it.
Correct.
So moving on to Lincoln Highland John's master plan update. And this update's also going to include a little bit of an update with the Bream Alley wall because they're going to go hand in hand here in a sense. But the, the bottom line with the master plan is it's pretty much complete. We're ready to go forward with the design of Lincoln. The project's broken up into two parts here, Lincoln and then Highland and John's is a separate project. We wanted to move forward first with the East Lincoln because it's married with a Columbia Gas project. Robbie and I had a meeting with Columbia Gas maybe a month ago, three or, three or four weeks ago. And they are essentially going to be tabling their project for one year. So.
Good.
It is actually kind of a blessing in disguise because I had a conversation with Charles within the past week. Not only are we getting hit with these additional costs with our Gettysburg Interloop, but also you noticed on his budget proposal, there was the line item for the Bream Alley channel wall. And that went up a significant amount, 89% higher than what we had anticipated. So there's going to be a big expense for the Bream Alley channel wall and there's this expense for the Gettysburg Interloop that is putting our budget pretty close in terms of capital improvement projects. that is putting our budget pretty close in terms of capital improvement projects. Like Charles said, we have cash flow for our standard business. But Charles and I decided that we are going to discontinue progress engineering-wise on the East Lincoln for now until we know Columbia Gas is ready to move forward again. And then at that time, it'll be after next budgeting. It'll be after July, once we find out where we stand with our budget at that point. And then we can make a better decision to move forward. So it's actually, like I said, it's for now being tabled. We're ready to go with the project. There's no emergency there on East Lincoln Avenue. It's one of those things where we really need to do the pipe replacement, but at the same time that Columbia Gas does their work. Now, one other thing I wanted to point out is at this point, since we're tabling in it, we're not gonna do it in 2025. That means it's either a 2026 or 2027 project. We have been avoiding trying to do any major projects in 2026 because of the 250th anniversary of the United States. But I wanna make sure that you guys would still be okay with making it a 2026 project because we're gonna have another meeting. We have quarterly meetings with Columbia Gas where we plan these projects. And I just wanna give them an update and just make sure that we still are gonna be able to plan for moving forward with this project in 2026. East Lincoln isn't a major, you know, thoroughfare or anything like that. I just wanna make sure that you guys were still okay with that type of a schedule.
I am.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're driving the boat here.
Yeah, the Columbia Gas's project, should it move forward in 2026, is gonna be way more intensive. I mean, that has a pipe that goes down Old Harrisburg Road.
Right.
So that's gonna be way more intensive than our little storm drain project.
That's right. That's right.
How many steel pipes do you know? How many steel pipes do they have yet to replace?
They still have a lot in Cool Park. Lot of Cool Park still has, has... I think they're, they're done with the bare steel, but they still have coated steel.
Coated steel.
A significant amount of it. So that is gonna be the next, that's gonna be the next effort once we go to Lincoln and Highland, or I mean Highland and John's, is to start, they're gonna start replacing all of the pipes in Cool Park.
That's a big job.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it is.
Very big job. And that means all the streets. And a lot of the curbs. And then there'll be questions about sidewalks, but we don't wanna go there. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
To our solicitor. Easements for Stevens.
To be honest, folks, I have very little to say on that. That's primarily borough. Big undertaking, as previously discussed.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, some public entity, and I suspect it's gonna be the borough, is going to have to coordinate with a number of landowners. You know, to determine exactly, hopefully amicably and easily, you know, the scope of this easement to allow for borough and borough-related entities to get in there and do this work.
Well, I guess the word "plan" comes to mind. Can you reach out to your colleague or through Charles to say, what's the plan? You know, at least to start the conversations. Because we've been talking about it for a while.
Sure have.
And we don't wanna spin our wheels. We wanna at least go forward and say, okay, here is a plan and then have something to react to because we all know something's gotta be done.
And maybe I can chime in, help a little bit with this because like Solicitor Boyer mentioned, this is a borough project. So in my engineer's report for the Borough Council tonight, I gave them an update on this exact project. We have prepared a spreadsheet of all of the properties where there are walls. There's exactly 41 properties with channel walls. 23 of those are either already borough walls or we're recommending that the borough should own them. For instance, Coon Alley, where the wall collapsed a few years ago. Bream Alley, we're taking that project next year. Those are walls that the borough already owns. So out of those 23, there are some that are already the borough's. There are some others that just would make sense that the borough would own. There are 11 that have structures over top of them. We talked about the college has a structure over the top of one. We talked about the Creekside Apartments and those kind of things. And for now, we're excluding those from the list of what the ones we're suggesting that the borough would own. That leaves seven that are questionable, where there's a building that's kinda close to the wall, but not right over the wall. And we need to have some additional discussion with it. I had my structural engineer boil that down into a PowerPoint presentation one of the upcoming meetings soon. Of course, we got a busy fall here. I know the council's got a lot of budget meetings and stuff like that. So I don't know if we're gonna work this into a workshop in the fall or if it'll be something that we'll have to wait till the spring. But I'll be working with the manager and the council on deciding when they wanna start having meetings where they wanna start getting, diving into the weeds with this plan that you're talking about. Because that would be the next step then, from there. Then we can, we can draft this policy.
Well, I guess, I guess, first of all, you forgot one of the seasons, winter.
Sure.
We have winter. So we have time. And, and so is, does the borough, borough solicitor, is he on board with, I mean, he hears the presentations, I know, and he's an intelligent guy, but he has to be given marching orders by someone to say, okay, this is the information, you know, is he? I mean, that's the next question. Because we know our solicitors all over this.
Why, thank you.
But, but we, we need the borough to start making some progress on this, so.
I was, I was just gonna say, I, you're 100% right. I, I just know that Harry's plate is full.
Oh, I, I, yeah.
And so I, it's, it's a lot of trains coming down, a lot of tracks, and they're all getting ready to collide. And we're struggling to figure out how to prioritize and manage all those moving parts, so.
But, and, and I get it, I, you know. This is, for a small town, there's a lot going on.
There is.
A lot. But at the end of the day, it impedes our ability to seek grant money. If we don't own, if it's not clear who owns what, then, you know, things are gonna start happening that we don't like in that, in that channel, in Stevens Run, so.
Yeah, yeah, Mike, that, that's a good point. And that's also my report to the council tonight is that, of course, there's, Cozen O'Connor's been looking for funding.
Right.
And they have identified a source for this.
Yes.
So we can't really start pursuing that until we've identified the ownership.
Yeah.
Of course, it's, it's one of those things where this really should be done, but it only becomes an emergency when the walls start falling in.
That's right.
Which could happen at any time.
Yep. We've had reports.
Can you just repeat one more time, so I heard that? How many properties is, did you say?
Forty, 41 total properties.
Forty-one, but then what was the seven at the end there?
That's 23 that we either already own or should own. 11 that we shouldn't because I have a structure over it.
The walls being, not the properties, but the walls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about 23 properties where we either own the wall or
Oh, okay.
should own the wall. 11 properties where there's a structure over it where we shouldn't own them. And then seven that are questioned, questionable, where there's a building that's close to the wall, but it's not really built right over the wall or have an entire culvert over top of the channel.
Yeah. Because what I was thinking is that in addition to the urgency that you've raised by explaining the condition of some of them for safety and property loss, is development and resale, that maybe people are holding on to properties because they believe they can't sell them with an uncertain future related to the wall on their property, or they're not developing. I think in Planning Commission, we've seen a little bit of that.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
On obstacles to development.
Okay.
Because of the...
I don't wanna box anybody in here. It seems to me that the way to do this would be, you do a title search of each property. You know, identify who, what, if anything, there is already pertaining to those walls. And if there is, you know, you get a sense of that. And if there's not, then you recognize who the property owner is. And then you look at what is the outcome that we're trying to achieve for this specific property? Do we own it? Are we trying to confirm and memorialize that? Are we trying to take ownership of it? Or are we trying to disclaim ownership of it? So there are a lot of moving pieces, but I think some of this is not necessarily going to change. You know, the, whatever is on the public record over the last 150 years relative to these properties is not going to change, barring some miraculous discovery. So the homework could certainly be done whenever.
Right.
And then pair it up with the recommendations from borough engineer, seems to me.
Well, let's hope the borough knows that the Stormwater Authority is kinda chomping at the bit to get it moving and hopefully in the direction that will be beneficial to all of us. Okay, enough said, I guess, there. Stevens Run cleanout update. Robbie?
Okay, I can. Yeah, this is gonna be turned over to Chad eventually because of permitting. But as you, as you may know or may didn't know, we did some cleanout out by the bike bridge through our permit. Anything more that we do, we have to get permits now. You wanna chime in here?
Yeah. Let me start by saying, so cleaning out Stevens Run is something that the borough's done for 100 years, 200 years, right?
That's right.
It fills in with sediment from time to time. You gotta go in there and clean it out. 100 years ago, you just go in there and you dig it out and without permits. Today's world is different. So not too long ago, we cleaned out the section through the college and we got our fingers smacked a little bit and said, hey, you need permits for these things in the future. So when we started looking into it, the, it's broken into kind of two pieces. It's the pieces that are already near a permitted encroachment, and then it's the parts that are not near a permitted encroachment. If it's within a permanent encroachment or within 50 feet of an permitted encroachment, then we can, with a couple of steps, one month worth of work, go in and clean those areas out. If there's areas that's not within 50 feet of a permanent encroachment, then you would, we need to find out from DEP what kind of permitting we have to get. What we are going to consider is that all of those areas where it's not within 50 feet, we would just get one permanent permit. So to be able to do that, and what I mean by permanent is that anytime we want to, if we follow the steps, that we could go in there and clean it out. I don't know if DEP is gonna go for that or not, but that's kind of our idea. And let me explain a little bit what I mean by a, an encroachment is a bridge or a wall. So if there's already a wall or if there's already a bridge, there's already an encroachment into the stream. And so a lot of Stevens Run has that. So those areas where they're permitted, we can go in there and clean, and clean out along the walls. The areas where that doesn't exist, there's areas like along Creekside Apartments, along the college, along Victor by Fourth Street. There's a piece of the stream there. All through the rec park. Those don't have permanent encroachments. So those are gonna be a little bit harder to permit. Now, I will say, like Robbie said, there is some work that we've already completed, and those were the worst areas. So, and I don't know if Mike would agree or not, but I don't know that there's any like major issues right now in the channel that we know of. That doesn't mean that there's not gonna be issues that we're gonna have to get ahead of. We don't wanna be reactive to this. We wanna try to be proactive. So the idea of moving forward is to pursue the permits that we're gonna need to be able to permanently go in there. And like we talked about earlier with the skid steer thing that Robbie's talking about, one of the goals, if, if the borough owns that piece of equipment, then we can kind of be nimble with when we wanna do it. Middle of July, when it's hot and dry, is the perfect time to go in there and do these cleanouts. You don't wanna do it at other times. So there's like a really small window, and you only know within two weeks if that's the right window. So trying to bid this out and get a contractor for these things is really hard to do.
Right.
So if we had a permanent permit for these things, we can pick the time, whenever that perfect window is, and we can go and do the work.
Well, the other section that comes to mind, not frequently, and it should for me, is the section below Fourth Street down to Rock Creek. Because that's the section that is wooded. We have sewer line going through there on top. That, that can be easily a problematic area. And it's one of the areas that, of course, there's no, but no obstructions, whatever you call those encroachments.
There's a few pipe encroachments there.
Yeah. But, but I hope DEP can see the wisdom of why we need something permanent because we have to react to it. Because, you know, it all flows downstream and...
Everything.
Everything.
They didn't really see the wisdom in the 90s.
No. And, and, well, anyway. So I guess you're asking this board for permission to go forward to investigate this. And then maybe you can report back in December to say, is it possible? If, and if not, what is possible, you know, to, to make this a smooth process? Not a process that we have to continually get permits for sections of a stream, which is now a stormwater channel, unfortunately. Not a beautiful stream as it was 100 years ago. And, and so we don't continue to spin wheels and waste time, so.
Yeah, I think, I think for now, we would, we would, what DB would call a pre-application meeting. We would just ask for their guidance on, are we heading down the right path? Is what we wanna do here, is that something that you guys would approve? And then I would come back and report to you guys before we would make it, take any further action.
And if you can set up a meeting and I'm available, I'd like to be there. And I, I won't be sarcastic or wonder why we have to do it. I'll be a good citizen with it, so. Okay. Any questions on that? So we'll let you go ahead. Thank you. Deb, rates, rules, and regulations?
Yes, we did discuss moving the payments to a calendar year. Basically, through January through March, we received approximately 87 permits. April through October, we get about 400. So the timing of that to put it in the winter was justified with some of that information and research, and I can send that out.
Please, yeah. Send it out to everybody so they see it.
And also from July to August, we receive approximately $324,000 in payments in that short amount of time in the middle of summer. Sometimes I spend an eight-hour day plugging in the payments because they come in $100 increments generally.
Right.
And most of our payments are still coming in with paper checks.
Right.
Out of the three, or the 324 paper checks, and we get about $32,000 through the PSN automated payment system. So it's not used nearly as much. That would help with some of the labor of processing those. Some of the other things, I just have a punch list that Adam and I had worked on over the last year with some of the changes, removal of the 2% discount, revamping the appeals requirement process. Just to make it a little clearer, Chad and I had discussed that. Moving fees to the calendar year, which we've discussed earlier, and add a major stormwater application. Currently, we only have a minor application process. So we wanted to kinda make that, you know, when someone needs to go in and it's within the square footage, 800 under and over, where it's reviewed either by both Chad and I or just the engineering office. Would make that a little clearer. Let's see, what else? So the appeal process and the stormwater. I think that's about it. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll kinda get a punch list and send that out. And also, I'll put in the chapters and the pages that it affects, and then you guys can review that. And if you wanna add anything or have any questions, any other changes in the, in the book or if Chad has anything or Adam that he would like to add.
That would, yeah, if you could give us an email with all those things in it, that would be very helpful.
Because we're kinda compiling that now.
Yes.
And trying to figure it out. So I'll do that and get it out to you this week.
Good. And that way, we can be ready for whenever we bring up the changes in the RRRs that...
Yep.
We should have that already done as far as homework is concerned. Any questions? Kurt, you look like you need a question.
When are we looking to make, implement these?
Well, usually we do it in December or January. That's when we usually review the rates, rules, and regulations and then make any changes.
What we...
January this year, will we?
If you're meeting... If we meet in December.
February.
We'll meet in February, I guess.
We don't need to organize, right? Or do we?
Do we?
We do, but we don't have to do it in a particular time frame.
Okay, okay. So, we do it at the reorganization, reorganization meeting in February.
One of the benefits of doing it in February was, before we did that, we were always kind of reorganizing before we had the people appointed.
Yeah.
Which always made me a little, eh. What we typically do, Kurt, is we go through and Deborah will recommend, in consultation with everybody, specific changes to the rates, rules and regs and it'll be in track changes. And then we kind of go through and sometimes we do that preliminarily at this meeting, but I don't know that, I don't think we're missing anything right now.
Okay.
The deadline would be to make sure we get it done before the billing cycle in July of next year.
Correct. So, we try to do it as early as we can, so January, February, December. Okay, thank you, thank you. Capital improvements, I think that means plan updates.
The plan.
Plan updates.
And really, I already gave those updates pretty much when we talked about the Lincoln and the Bream Alley Channel wall, so there's nothing else.
Okay.
When's Bream Alley? Do we know when that's starting yet?
I'm understanding that the interceptor is gonna start early in next year and it's about a one-year-long project. So, they're probably gonna start at the bottom of the hill on Water Street and work their way up. So, my guess is the Bream Alley will be sometime midsummer. That's just my best guess.
So, where are they gonna actually start?
Water and Stratton.
At the bridge?
Near Water and Stratton, where they left off, whatever that was, five years ago.
Okay, Water and Stratton, okay. Say, okay.
Ended up...
They don't have to start, we're just assuming that that's what, it's up to the contractor to position a project the way he wants to do it, but, you know, water flows downhill, so they always start at the bottom of the hill and build the pipe up. That's typically the way it works.
Okay.
Easier that way.
Any questions? Not hearing any. Charles, the new business is American Society of Landscape Architects Annual Meeting?
Yeah, so, I received correspondence from the President of American Society of Landscape Architects, who is going to be holding their annual conference here in Gettysburg, April ten to twelve next year at the Wyndham.
Big deal.
And they are asking if we would like to participate as a speaker or speakers with the onsite review of Culp's Run, the work that was, was done on Culp's Run.
How did they hear about that?
It says Land Studies worked with you and the Borough.
Oh, okay.
On the floodplain restoration of Culp's Run.
Those land study people there.
Yeah.
They're advocates, advocates for us, yeah.
So, the question is, would someone be interested in participating in that show and tell? I'd be happy to go out, but I don't, I don't wanna do the telling.
We'll cheer for you.
Yeah. Charles, is, is Land Studies gonna be able to be at this? Because that would be something that Reed would be the perfect person for.
And this is, is this a show and tell onsite?
It is.
So, yes.
We would like to include a field tour of the project.
I mean, I could go along as a representative, but as far as knowledgeable about the technical aspects of this, that they're gonna be most interested.
That's why I didn't wanna do the telling. Same reason.
Yeah.
And I would have to check with Reed, just, he just took a new job.
Oh, no.
He has his own company, actually. He started his own company.
Well...
But he was our, he was the project manager for that project and he's by far the most knowledgeable in this, in this field. I don't know if he could do it now as, with his new, from, from the, from his new firm's perspective or not, or if he would have to get somebody from Land Studies, but we could, if, if somebody from Land Studies or Reed was available, that would be what I would recommend.
Right.
And otherwise, I can, you know, I know enough to be dangerous, so I could do that. But, but it's, it's, it's really Reed's, Reed's baby.
All right, well, maybe I'll reach out, we'll talk to you offline.
Okay.
We'll figure that out.
Okay, great.
But, I mean, obviously, we have something really good to...
I'll be in Indianapolis.
To show.
You know that. Okay. Thank you, thank you. I think that's, I mean, that's a very big professional organization. That's great that they're coming to Gettysburg, first of all, for our economy and second, I mean, if they wanna see one of our projects, that's terrific.
Yep.
That's, that's a good thing, thank you. Time for public comment, again.
No public.
No public.
Well, Matt's here.
Well, Matt's here, but he's, he's, he's getting ready for his next meeting. So, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
It's a moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Here we know opposition. This meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Borough Council, our business meeting for October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I would like you all to please join me as we stand for a moment of silence and a pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So I have sort of a list of announcements here for the benefit of the public. We have a number of upcoming meetings as we begin tonight the process of crafting the two thousand twenty-five budget. So next Monday, the twenty-first at seven P M will be a budget work session. Monday, the twenty-eighth at seven P M will be a budget work session. Monday, November fourth at seven P M will be a budget work session. And Tuesday, November fifth, if needed, will be a budget work session, followed by Tuesday, November twelfth, the council business meeting. On Wednesday, November twentieth, the draft of the budget will be posted for public review. And then Monday, December ninth, is our regular business meeting for the month, at which point we hope to be adopting a budget for two thousand twenty-five. Further announcements, Gettysburg Borough Residence Electronics Device Recycling Event, TVs and computers, will be this Saturday, the nineteenth. Please register ahead of time by contacting Judy Butterfield here at seven one seven three three seven oh seven two four, or you can register through our website, which is gettysburgpa.gov. An executive session of the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg, was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four monthly work session, meeting of the Borough Council, consistent with section seven zero eight A one and section seven zero eight A five of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with section seven zero eight A one and section seven zero eight A five of the Sunshine Act, for the following purposes: one, to provide information and to discuss matters of employment, terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance of Borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. That takes us to the approval of the agenda and the minutes. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And would anybody care to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Borough Council meeting of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and the Borough Council work session of September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four as presented?
Sure. A motion to approve minutes of the Borough Council meeting of September twenty, of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and the Borough Council work session of September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, amendments, omissions, or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we have two special presentations tonight. Unfortunately, the mayor was not feeling well tonight, so she's asked me to make her announcement in her stead. She just wanted to make it official that the borough's observation of Halloween will be October thirty-first, from six P M to eight P M. And then our next special presentation is from the manager, who will be going over his draft budget proposal for two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you for that. As always, the, the meeting in October is the unveiling of the draft budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I would mention that this is just a first draft proposal. This is not going to be the final product for those watching at home, so let's get into it. Just wanted to recap real briefly a nine-year history of expenses in the borough. You can see through, from two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty-four, the only year that's really an anomaly there is in two thousand twenty, where the budget was amended in mid-year. The asterisks in yellow represent budgets that have been balanced primarily by using ARPA funds, and very little in the way of tax increases, which is good news. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into this. Consistent with the nine-year history, you can see the only year in those nine years was two thousand twenty, where the borough did run its only deficit in the previous nine years. And that, of course, was a result of the COVID pandemic. Wanted to show you a graph of some economic trends in the borough. Really, surprisingly strong economic activity in the borough as it relates to pillow tax. You can see, pre-pandemic, just kind of been chugging along pretty standard evenly throughout the, the previous years, dating back to two thousand fourteen. Obviously, things tanked, for obvious reasons, in two thousand twenty. But then, coming out of the pandemic through last year, pillow tax really rebounded and increased to levels that frankly have not been, been witnessed in the borough. And you can see our two thousand twenty-four numbers year-to-date, the last bar on the right-hand side, are keeping very good pace with the revenues collected in two thousand twenty-three. Similarly, in parking revenue, you see everything tanked in two thousand twenty, but beyond that, things really are very robust. And the most recent years are at the top of this graph. So two thousand sixteen is the last bar. You can see things were ticking up. Pandemic hit, things tanked, and parking revenues have increased very, very steadily over the, the last three years. I can see year-to-date in two thousand twenty-four, we are significantly outpacing parking revenue generated year-to-date. And that is largely because of the policy decision that council made last year by increasing the overnight rate in the resource alley parking garage from twelve dollars per day to eighteen dollars per day. Those numbers are really showing up. Here is a trend of millage rate history in the borough. You can see that the borough-wide county reassessment occurred in two thousand eleven. And really, from a millage perspective, has been holding fairly steady, just incrementally increasing over the years. So between, over the last thirteen years, mills have only increased one point one five six seven mills, which averages just under point zero nine mills per year, or a thirty-two percent increase over thirteen years, which essentially is what you would expect from an inflationary perspective before the, the astronomical inflation experiences over the last few years. But if you would average that out over, over the last thirteen years or so, it'd be about two and a half percent, which is standard inflation pre-pandemic. We always start with a zero-based budget model. So we design around programs and services. We assess the costs of those services for each department. We analyze upcoming needs of those departments. We do consider ARPA funding as a possible revenue replacement source as permitted by the legislation in two thousand twenty-one. The budget will incorporate our capital projects currently in the pipeline and those that are upcoming. And we also try to take into account the inflationary pressures that we all are very aware, well aware of. This is not a holistic list of services, but just an example of services provided by the municipality for folks following along at home. We do special event permitting, we street clean, we comply with our MS four, our stormwater mandates, we support bus and transit, we obviously have crime prevention and police, parking enforcement, we construct a lot of streets, keep the lights on, remove snow, we pick up yard waste, we use land management, best practices, provide water and sewer through our affiliates with this GMA, code enforcement, emergency preparedness, we have a cable franchise with Comcast, and the list goes on and on. We are a full-service municipality, very busy for a small town, I might add. What's funded in each of these departments? We're going to start with revenues. The current millage rate is four point one seven seven mills for the general fund. Council authorized an increase to point five mills in the fire fund for last year. We have revenues collected through occupational taxes. We have revenues collected through what's known as Act five eleven, or local enabling taxes. These are your per capita taxes, your earned income taxes, real estate transfer, amusement admission tax, mechanical devices. We also collect revenues through licensees, licenses and permits, so things like your regulated rental licenses, transit retail, outdoor dining, special event permits, guided walking tours, carriage licenses, those types of things generate revenue for the borough. We have non-business licenses, land use permits, recycling permit, building permits that are U C C, and also building permits that are non-U C C, sign permits, which go along with the sign ordinance that was just recently adopted by council, highway occupancy and solicitation fees. Department three thirty-one, fines and forfeits. Here we have revenues collected through fines from the district magistrate, clerk of courts, violations of other fines, state police fines. We have restitution. We also have parking-generated ticket revenue in this category. Interest earnings, self-explanatory. I would note, and then we can talk a little bit about this later, recently the borough began to invest in the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, PLIGET, and that is reaping some very, very good returns. Currently, much of the borough's investments are in the five point two percent range. We have a royalties coming in from cell tower, small cell sites, on top of some of our traffic signals throughout the municipality. Once in a while, we'll get a federal grant. Once in a while, we, well, actually annually, we get a small grant from the state on Act one oh one recycling. We get state shared revenue, so your public utility tax, part of that comes to the borough, public safety grants, alcoholic beverage licenses, we get a cut of that. We also get motor vehicle fuels, tax, liquid fuels. Pillow tax, self-explanatory, more heads and beds benefits the borough through pillow tax. Charges for services, a lot of, a lot of these are money out, money in kind of things. So these are a lot, largely, services the borough provides to support things like a special event, police escorts, those types of things, and then those get billed and come back. So you can see, for instance, the, the bottom here, reimbursements we get from Public Works, police, parking, stormwater authority, Main Street Gettysburg, engineering fees, fire company, insurance claims, et cetera. Parking department generates a lot of revenue for the borough. These are all the various fees associated with parking programs for the borough. Once in a while, we'll get some private citizens who contribute to the borough for any number of, of things. Sometimes those are private, sometimes those are corporate, and sometimes those are designated for the police department. Three eighty-nine is a miscellaneous revenue source. We've been using this revenue category to account for any COVID loan repayments. If you remember, back in two thousand twenty-one, council authorized COVID loans to support our local businesses. Those loans are being repaid. Some have paid in full, and others have a few bucks left, but we should be collecting most of those pretty soon. Fuel facilities tax, we have a fueling station at the Public Works Building, so any public entity that utilizes those gas cards are charged a nominal fee for that service. Expenses, for Department four hundred, legislative, the Borough Council, salaries, payroll taxes, and other things to support your functions as civic leaders. Office of the Manager supports myself, Sarah Stahl, Borough Secretary, Murray, the new H R coordinator, and Tammy Murdoff Finance pays salaries, benefits, and local professional development. Fourth three, tax collection, our elected tax collector gets a stipend. This department pays for that. Four oh nine, general government administration, pretty self-explanatory here, things like office supplies. We do purchase merchandise for resale, borough-related merchandise, flags, pins, those types of things. We provide the borough two newsletters out of this department. Obviously, we need to support our computers, our phones, and internet fees, et cetera. We have our audit budgeted in this department, legal fees, some additional professional development insurances. And I added a category at the bottom, sister city expenses, and this should be a point of conversation. I'd point out, as we get into these discussions, we have a sister city in Secaucahara that is engaging us. is engaging us fairly vigorously, and so we need to start figuring out how to manage those expenses moving forward. There's any number of different ways we can do it, but we should have that conversation from a budgetary perspective. And of course, there's capital improvement items in here under professional services. This talks about Michael Baker, we continue to engage them for resubmission of the Raze Grant SS4A, which would be a continuation of the grant that we were just awarded. I'll talk about that in my formal report later in the meeting. TA set aside, we would also like to apply for construction funding. Police Department. Not a lot's changed in this department from last year. The big thing here is the the capital projects in the department that were budgeted last year have been completed. So you won't see a lot of capital expenditures in the police department, but you will see a request for additional staffing when we get into that. So we we do have a request from the department for a master sergeant and the addition of a part time police secretary. Currently, the department has 14 sworn officers authorized. We don't have that many on the staff yet, but we the current staffing level is 14 sworn. Fire Department. Code enforcement, this is Pete Griffion, who takes care of our in-house regulated rental There is a fleet management 2021 traverse that is shared between this department and Public Works Department. 414 Planning pays for the salaries of the department, their payroll taxes and benefits, office supplies, and professional development. Emergency Management pays a very nominal stipend for Dave Sanders, the borough's emergency management coordinator. Health Department, essentially to promote Act 101 Recycling Initiatives and also Trap Neuter and Release Program for feral cats, which is ever.
I'm glad you specified.
Yes. Fairly, it's actually a fairly successful program, and we have utilized that, and we have a good relationship with this PCA for that, or forever love, sorry. 430 Public Works. We have a request for an additional staff member in Public Works in this department. This is going to be a hybrid employee, shared between Public Works at 75% and Parking Department at 25%. We've been hoping to muddle through after a grounds and maintenance person retired a few years ago. That person primarily reported to the Racehorse Alley Garage and maintained the garage facility. It's been increasingly difficult just to keep pace with those needs with Robbie's staff alone. So we would like to to augment his very small staff of four and one mechanic to to give him a few more resources to keep up with the the maintenance needs of the borough. There are capital projects also budgeted in this department. We have the plans for a new Department Department of Public Works facility, and that's not going to be inexpensive. But we do know, I thought recognized it's, I don't know, Robbie, probably 30 years overdue. When was that built, in the 50s, that facility? Yeah, so it it needs it needs some love, no doubt. We also have budgeted in here a dump truck and a leaf vacuum truck. One is a lease to own, which Robbie will talk about in a little bit. The other is going to be paid for through a grant that was secured for the borough, and we've just recently purchased a purchase, well, put a down payment on that. And then also the Fleet Enterprise Program in 430 as well. Winter Maintenance, pretty self explanatory, traffic control devices, utility bills to keep those lights going, street lighting, same thing, utility bills, sidewalks and crosswalks. We are beginning to make progress on the sidewalk replacement program. Council's been considering various aspects of that policy briefing summary for some time, so we're going to start thinking about how to advance that from a monetary perspective as well. Of course, the inner loop continues with Washington Street Segment, Gettysburg Inner Loop Phase B to B, and that construction continues as we speak. Storm stewards and drains is actually the Stormwater Authority, so it's just here as a placeholder. Just a note that council does not budget for them. However, they did look at their proposed 2025 budget prior to this meeting tonight, and they all are in agreement with what was presented to them should go into your budget. So we made progress on that front tonight, so we can talk about the reimbursement aspect to that as we get into discussions for council. We have no work planned on bridges in 2025, roads and alleys. Obviously, we're continuing our Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, the Gettysburg Inner Loop, and also Highland and Johns Avenue. Parking Department, I mentioned a little bit ago, under 430 Public Works, we have the shared, the request for the shared new employee. I inadvertently left a capital improvement project in here from last year. The garage counting system and the kiosk up is is not happening. We can't find a system, a solution that works for the type of garage setup we have, so that should be removed. The kiosk upgrades are completed. Parks and Rec, this is our GARA appropriation. Shade Tree for our street trees. Our our friends over at Adams County Arts Council, Rabbit Transit, and Main Street Gettysburg are funded under community development. Obviously, we have debt principal and interest to pay, and any interfund transfers out to support other types of programs in the borough. All right. In 2025, we have projected revenue of $5.95 million. In the fire fund, $248,000. CDBG allotment for fiscal year 2020, the program year and the actual year you use these get a little confusing, but for our 129, that was for the 2022. Yeah. So we're going to be using 2022 funds in 2025. Yeah, it does get confusing. Capital Projects Funds will collect about $317,000 this year. Debt Service, it's not really collecting, this will be a transfer from the general fund to Debt Service of $650,000. Capital Reserve Revenue, about $21,000. Liquid Fuels, $178,000 estimated revenue for revolving loan, $26,000, and only $16,000 in ARPA. If you remember, all of our ARPA funds have been collected from the federal government, and so the $16,000 represents interest that would be collected on those funds before we expend them. Projected expenses in each department, $6.9 million, which is very consistent with our current 2024 general fund budget. 248 in Fire Fund, $129,000 in CDBG, 1.85 million in Capital Projects. Essentially, that is a transfer from one fund to the other once council designates or restricts funds for a specific project. Debt Service Payments, about $641,000. Expenses of $0 in Capital Reserve. Liquid Fuels, only $72,000. Zero expenses in revolving loan and $716,000 in ARPA, which would draw that down to about zero from what the borough had years ago. These are the projected surpluses and or deficits in each of the funds. A deficit of $976,000 to start with in the general fund. Fire Fund is zero, surplus of 250 in CDBG, deficit of 1.5 in Capital Projects, not alarming because that money is already there, it's just moving it to a different location for use elsewhere. Debt Service will have a surplus of $9,400 after our debts are paid for 2025. Capital Reserve, $21,000 surplus. Liquid Fuels, $105,000 surplus. No surplus or deficit in revolving loan, and then a deficit of 700 because we expended it down in ARPA. This is a list of all of the capital projects that were or are identified in the Capital Improvement Plan between 2022 and 2026. This list is the same list, although it's showing a little progress on some of those. So those that are in in the orange crossed out means they have been completed. If they are in green bold, they are in progress or will be in progress in some capacity in 2025. Anything in white has not been acted upon yet. Real quick, I wanted to add, if you notice, the total for this Capital Improvement Plan is $26 million. It's a very large, ambitious, audacious plan. So this, I'm not going to belabor this slide, it just goes through our projected revenues by department. Same thing with our expenses. We added a column here of the expenses increase or decrease by percentage in each of the borough's departments. Overall, we're looking to spend $6.93 million, was actually half of a percent less than What are the cost drivers that are generating this general fund shortfall? The big one is health insurance premiums. One of the big ones, I should say, is health insurance premiums. The borough has been very fortunate over the last five years where we have not experienced the astronomical increases that we often hear about in media. That changed for the borough for our premiums in 2025. We're going to be hit with a 19.9% increase in in health insurance premiums. Other cost drivers are the two salaries that have been added to the police department with no funding source over the last couple of years. Another cost driver would be the additional request for an employee in Public Works and Parking to about $92,000. And each of the officers, incidentally, their labor burden's about 100, just under $125,000 each. The real big cost driver for the deficit is the $650,000 annual debt service payment that the borough is required to support its general obligation bond that was taken in 2016. And of course, we all understand the general inflationary pressures that have been been going on for some time now. In general, and this is not unique to Gettysburg, I I talk about this with other managers across the Commonwealth, construction costs are coming in anywhere to 20 and 40%, sometimes higher, percent above estimates. So we ourselves have experienced this right now with the increased costs on our Washington Street project. I'm not going to belabor this, I just wanted to point out that, remind everyone that the borough's been fortunate in that we we were the recipient of $3.1 million in ARPA funds in 2021, and the borough has been judiciously using those funds over the last four years in revenue replacement and the provision of government services, air quotes, because that's the direct language in the authorizing legislation. Currently, the borough has about $702,000 of that left in its ARPA fund. After that 702 is gone, it is gone, and we're going to have to have some uncomfortable conversations, I think, back to positions of the borough pre pandemic when the structural deficit was always an issue every every budget year. So this slide just mentions that the budget before you right now does not use any ARPA funds to balance anything, and that is why we currently have the $97, $970,000 shortfall. The borough does have until December 31, 2026, to figure out how you want to move forward dealing with structural deficits beyond this budget year. Again, our current millage, if you break it down by debt service, debt service would require about 1.267 mills. Last year, council authorized .5 mills for Fire Fund, which leaves 2.9099 mills for use in the general fund, or an aggregate of 4.6770 mills for 2024. I did not propose millage rates in this budget proposal because we have a lot to talk about as it relates to what we want to do with ARPA funds and any other cuts or additions or alterations. So I will assume council would like to leave the Fire Fund at .5, so I put that in there. To support the borough's debt service in 2025, we'll need 1.2589 mills. Question is, what are the X's going to be at the top in yellow? Just for reference points, if you were to entertain tax increases to cover some of these fiscal stresses, each officer that has been authorized, each additional officer that was authorized would require a .2464 mill to pay for their total labor burden. If we were to add the Department of Public Works and Parking Employment Shared, Parking Department Shared Employee, that would equate to 1.834 mills for their total labor burden. Debt Service, if you were to increase mills just just to cover that in addition to what's already been authorized, point or 1.2589 mills. And if you just wanted to talk about the increase in the health insurance premium, .2819 equals the 19.9% increase in insurance premiums. Just a reminder, ARPA will will expire very soon, so things you might want to consider, keep pace with inflation, raise 79,000 with a millage increase over the next three years of just .1573. You could just implement the millage to cover the cost of the additional staff members or the health insurance premiums, or burn some more ARPA money to make, find your balance in that way. And that concludes the rough draft. So a lot to talk about, a lot to consider, a lot to debate, and some tough decisions are going to need to start being made, and we'll get into that next week. In the next week, you'll be getting more detailed versions of this budget, and I'm also going to put together a quick Excel spreadsheet that shows each department without any other extraneous details so that you can get a quick, quick idea of what each department's been spending over the last, you know, six, seven, eight years. Okay? Questions?
It's a lot to digest. Fortunately, we get to spend the next two months working on that. Does anybody have any sort of 30,000 foot view questions they wanted to ask tonight before we move on? All right. It is a, it's going to be a substantial document when we receive it for the new members. If you need any assistance navigating that, please reach out to anyone who's been on council longer, and we're all happy to help you navigate that document. That takes us to tonight's first public comment section for the evening. This section is limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. We ask that people use the podium. Please limit yourself to five minutes, and we need your name and address of residence, please. Is there any public comment?
Is the item we just covered on the on the agenda, does that ask a question?
Not specifically, no. If you had a question you wanted to wait for the end, that would be fine. Cool. Thank you. All right. Not seeing any other public comments, so we'll move on to the planning department. Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of the report was provided in digital files. Overall, the Planning Commission, they met in September 16 at the GARA facility. They're going to be meeting once They're going to be meeting once again at the Charlie Steiner Building, the Assembly Room, on October 21st. They have, their meeting happens at the same time as one of the budget meetings. Otherwise, with that, with regards to the Planning Commission, we have received an application for subdivision land development for the Gettysburg Station project. However, it's at this time incomplete. It has a file number so it can proceed with Harb review. That will be occurring tomorrow. And I guess Deborah will be able to provide some additional information at that time. With regards to the motion for tonight, the staff has not received any additional materials. I wasn't sure how you wanted to proceed with that. But otherwise, you can still schedule the public hearing as necessary.
Are there additional materials that you're expecting to receive?
Well, generally, we don't have an idea of the transfer, how it would happen in the application materials. So that's something we had hoped to have at this time, but do not.
So if those items are presented before the hearing, it could move forward?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I would think it's probably prudent for us to go ahead just because there is such a, you know, logistical hurdle to us kicking the can down the road and waiting for those materials to come in. It would, it would cost everybody involved a month. So I would suggest we schedule it. And if for some reason it is still incomplete at the time of the hearing, then we would have to reschedule. Does anybody disagree with that assessment? Anybody care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to, this is to set the public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
To set a public hearing of the Borough Council to be held on Monday, October 28th, 2024, commencing at 6:30 PM for the purpose of receiving public comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the Borough of Gettysburg as a receiving municipality concerning a request made by or on behalf of Ravi Singh seeking approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license for use in the Borough at certain premises located at 517 Baltimore Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just, did they say what they're planning to do with it there? Is it going to be a full restaurant or are they just going to be selling like liquor, wine, beer out of the mini mart?
Those would be answered with the Liquor Control Board's application, which we haven't had an opportunity to see that. And that's why I was, I would prefer to have that information. But I understand we could, we could still move forward. And if it's not there, it'd be something we would discuss then with council.
That could also be part of the presentation made by the applicant to the council at the public hearing. I would anticipate you'd have to have some information on which to consider and act.
Yeah, I have similar questions too.
Because there's pumps there. So if he's, you know, it'd be, it'd be strange to put a restaurant in if there was still operating pumps and stuff. Just curious what the plan was.
Yeah. And I hate to speculate, but I'd hate to speculate. But of course, it also may be that PLCB isn't even considering, because I think they can, because they're the state in control of it, considering taking that restaurant liquor license and changing it to a very specific license for mini marts, gas station. For example, you can pick up things at Sheetz and Giant now and cocktails to go in a can and all of that jazz. So it may end up being altered, so it's not actually a restaurant liquor. I'm not speculating, but
Yeah, the restaurant.
Hopefully, we'll get some more information from them soon.
If it's, if it's the full restaurant, that's the most expensive one. Like there's cheaper ones you can get too. But, okay.
Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of setting the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to discuss with Mr. Whitmore? Anything else for us?
That's all.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move back to Mrs. English. How are you?
Good. Thank you. President Moon noted, we do have a recycling event on Saturday. I'm sure Judy will go on some more details on that. And as John mentioned, we, on the Harb agenda tomorrow, we are going to have a presentation and a motion for vote for the facade changes in design of the Gettysburg Station. And that's tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. And I do have some of the samples here of the color of brick and the exterior. If anybody wanted to take a look at that, we will also have that available at the meeting for view tomorrow evening. I have one motion on the agenda and my report is in your folder if you have any questions.
All right. Would anybody care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review during a meeting held on September 18th, 2024, and to approve the grant of a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented. COA-240065, major project, 37 Breckenridge Street, Joshua Niederheiser, for the prefab shed and concrete pad installation project that would provide a rear patio, updated parking area, and a new rear shed provided that the property lot be surveyed to determine lot dimensions prior to installation as submitted in the application dated August 29, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Since you have them, can I see them? Because I won't be at that other meeting that you mentioned.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on this motion?
No, not a discussion.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That motion carries. Are there any other questions for Mrs. English? All right.
I just wanted to have it noted that we saw it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. English. That takes us to Ms. Fissell in the Parking Department.
Good evening. I did provide a copy of my report. It has the comparisons from last year to this year for the tickets and the permits. The LPP permits, as you can see on the graphs, are still climbing. The reserved parking spaces in the garage have stayed the same. And on the, on the graph that shows all the revenue on the end of my report, you can see the parking garage almost, it actually did double the income from the parking garage from last year to this month, this year. And other than the motions, that's all I have. If you need to, if you'd like to see anything else on the report, if you'd like to see something changed, something new, something different, please let me know. There's a lot of different things I can do with the numbers and graphs, charts, things like that that are easily read.
Great. Would anybody care to make the motion on the MOU with the Garma?
I'll make a motion consistent with memorandum of understanding moo with the Gettysburg Area Retail Merchants Association Incorporated, Garma, to approve free holiday parking for the 2024 holiday season from Thanksgiving Day through New Year's Day. Free parking is designated every day from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM during the holiday season, with the exception of Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, on which days of the week parking will be paid as usual during normal metered hours. The designated parking areas, as requested by Garma, are as follows. Lincoln Square, the first blocks of Baltimore Street, York Street, Carlisle Street, and Chambersburg Street, and the first block of Steinware Ave.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Certainly.
So on the signs that designate the free parking, will the words every day be on there? Or will it say Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
It is the same sign from last year and it does say Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. That makes it clear. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we have a motion over the ADA space.
I'll make a motion to authorize the designation and establishment of a metered parking space for the exclusive use of persons with disabilities in an area on the east side of Baltimore Street at or near real property at 334 Baltimore Street and 336 Baltimore Street, and to authorize the placement and erection of appropriate signage that the designated parking space is reserved for use by persons with disabilities and that any unauthorized use by a person parking in such space shall be subject to a fine and may subject the unlawfully parked motor vehicle to towing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fissell. And it takes us to Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. You all should have received my report. Some highlights on my report. Fall brush pickup this year is going to be scheduled from October 28th to November 1st. We'll be collecting brush only. Don't mix in leaves or grass clippings with the brush because where we recycle that, we'll not take that mixed. So brush only, top curb, along the alleys. And we'll be going around twice that week to collecting brush from the residents. Fall leaf pickup will continue right after the brush pickup. We are now in the process of sweeping the streets with our street sweeper, try to keep the leaves out of the gutters and the catch basins. But leaves are coming down rather fast this year. So as soon as brush is over, we'll be right into leaves, picking up leaves. Same thing there. Residents are urged to put their leaves on top of the curb, not in the street and along the alleys for collection. And we'll just keep going around numerous times throughout the Borough, collecting piles of leaves as they show up. So you may have noticed the Halloween parade is coming up soon, so we are preparing for that. We are pre-staging some of our blocks for that Halloween parade. As soon as the parade's ever, we'll be pre-staging for the Remember State Parade at the end of November. So any questions?
Yes. What time will the traffic barriers be? And I know they're pre-staged now. What time will they be closed?
So there'll be two different, two different times. We will start to close the Halloween parade at 4:30 for the dance party that's down on the square. And that will be closed from Baltimore Middle down to the square, Chambersburg Street side, Carlisle Street side of the square, and down at York and Stratton. And that will be, that will be closing out at 4:30. Once we get that done and get the traffic signals up and working, which is probably going to be around 5:00, 5:30, starting to close the rest of the parade route.
Thank you. I have two more questions. Fall leaf pickup, as it says, place the piles of leaves along the curb, not in the street.
On top of the curb.
Thank you. On top of the curb.
Correct.
Not in the street, along the curb.
Correct.
On top of the curb. So closer to the sidewalk than the actual street pavement.
Correct.
On top of the curb, not in the street. And then my final thing, I noticed some wonderful work that you're doing on Chambersburg Street. And I know it's not a workshop meeting, but it's your department report. And might you be able to tell us a little bit about that?
Well, that's probably going to be in Chad's report.
Great. Because I noticed and I saw some really nasty things being dug out of there and I want to hear all about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll wait for Chad.
Do we need to discuss this thing you handed out from First Equipment Finance?
Do you want to do that now, Charles?
Yeah, yeah. This is actually also part of a budget discussion. So Robbie, do you want to give the 30,000-foot view of this?
Sure.
Talk about the financing.
So in front of you, you should have seen a paper from First Equipment Finance. That is actually a lease program, municipal lease program to replace one of our plow dump trucks. It's a five-year lease program. At the end of the lease, it becomes our piece of equipment for a dollar at the end of five years. And those are the payments for five years.
So the budget consideration is if we get this placed, the order placed this year, we will get a preferred rate as opposed to waiting for 2025.
Right.
So the question is, one, do you want to buy the dump truck? And two, if you do, at what price? And if the price is a preferred rate, we will need authorization to amend essentially our spending this year to get in at the preferred rate before, before the fiscal year ends. And then if that were to happen, just know that over the next four years, this will show on the budget as a required expense. We did this a few years ago when we bought the Baco, five years, and then we own it. So discussion point.
Robbie, can you give us the, a little bit of the background history on equipment we currently own and what's going wrong with all of that?
Okay. So we have, we do have an aging dump truck fleet. The last dump trucks that we purchased were in 2011. And they were $130,000 at that time. To replace that vehicle right now, you're up to $260,000. So we have a, the, the one vehicle is going to be replaced with the Leafback truck. And our 1999, which is 25 years old, is having rusting frame issues that's going to not soon pass inspection. So we're going to have to do something soon. And with the supply chain, we may not see this vehicle till, for maybe a year and a half, two years. So I'd like to get started on it now, get it ordered before we run into problems where we don't have that truck to use in winter storms.
Robbie, I think you answered the question I had, but I'm just wondering, what's the average lifespan of vehicles like this that we keep in the Borough? You mentioned 25.
25 years.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of, some depends, some of them are less than that.
Okay.
We've been fortunate. Our fleet, we've been able to keep our fleet for 25 to 30 years.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
I don't know if you've ever gotten to a place where a piece of equipment that you had wasn't available and we didn't have one to replace it. Do you then have to rent to get the job done?
If there's anything out there to rent, yes. Either that or we have to contract it out.
Contract it out. And is it possible? I know that ARPA funds can be used for some capital expenses and road improvements. Vehicles are under that or no?
I'm going to let Charles answer that question.
I don't believe so.
Well. Yes and no. We've taken a very conservative approach to using ARPA funds so that we don't get in trouble.
Sure.
This, I think, would probably be a gray area, probably permissible, but probably not as straightforward as what we're doing now.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? All right. So we will discuss this again at another point. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. The, we, we would need to pass a motion in November if we want to get in on this this year. Robbie, what the quote's good for, 30, 45 days, something like that?
30 days, yes.
So if we wait till November, we can authorize that expenditure and get it in the pipeline. We could always put a motion on the agenda and you could always vote it down if you decide not to do it. So.
Does anybody have any strong feelings, yes or no? Should we put this on the next agenda?
I'd like to see it on the next agenda, but I, to be discussed again and then voted, obviously.
Yeah, we can, we can add this as another topic at the budget workshop next week.
Sure. Great.
And if that's possible, Robbie, and you're, can you send us some data on some things that it's used for? Why are we, why is it so needed in the, I know it is, but I'd like some more information on what exactly this dump truck does for the Borough.
Sure.
I think it's, it's only, the price is only going to go higher. We know that.
Right.
So I'd like to see that. I'd also like to look at what, if there's anything that we have budgeted that we could I'd also like to look at what, if there's anything that we have budgeted that we could, that we could use ARPA funds for, so that it's helping the blow. But we can discuss that.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. You have what you needed for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else for Mr. Harbaugh? Okay. Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to Mr. Claybaugh.
Good evening, council. You should have a copy of my written report in your packets. And I promise Chad, I will get into the Gettysburg Interloop project. He mentioned Chambersburg Street. That's the project he's talking about, and that's what I spent most of my life doing over the last month. But before I get into that, and there are two motions on your agenda as well with regards to that project, but I did want to give you a couple other highlights from my report. The first section of my report, what I did there is I called it projects on the horizon. I bulleted a couple of the projects that I talked with manager Gabriel over the last month, things that we are trying to get into the budget for next year and things that we aren't putting into the budget. So I just kind of recapped those things so that everybody sees that we're on the same page. The standard garage, the Racehorse Alley Garage Maintenance is on the budget. There isn't any work being done on bridges or street work next year. Street work's largely a liquid fuels item anyways, so we're banking that liquid fuels money into a future year. The Bream Alley Channel Wall is moving forward. Gettysburg Municipal Authority already opened the bids for their new interceptor. The wall came in 89% higher than our estimates. So a pretty significant hit. Of course, that's not a hit to the borough, that's a hit to the Stormwater Authority. Because of that, we end up pushing a different project, but we have to do that. There's not really an option. We have to move forward with that project. So the next item that I put on there is the East Lincoln Storm Drain Project. That's the project that's going to get pushed because of the new costs, not only the cost for the Gettysburg Interloop Project, but to the Stormwater Authority, but also the cost of this Bream Alley Wall. The blessing in disguise there is that Columbia Gas is kind of driving the schedule for the East Lincoln Project, and they're not ready to move forward next year anyways. So we're going to be putting that until 2026. And I also gave you an update there on the CDBG curb ramps. As Charles mentioned, we are looking to replace some curb ramps next year, so we'll have to budget some money for the engineering of those. I also gave you an update on the channel wall assessment. That's something that is kind of, it's one of those things where it's not an emergency until the walls start falling in, but we know that the engineers have told us that wall failures are imminent. We also have Cozen O'Connor who is looking for funding for those walls. Before we can start pursuing public funding, though, we have to make sure that we have the proper ownership. So met with the solicitor, we went through all of the walls. I gave you some of the stats there in my report. There's a total of 41 properties that have channel walls on them. About 23 of those are walls that either we already own, like the walls on Coon Alley and the walls on Bream Alley that we're going to be doing next year, or that the borough should own. That leaves 11 that we shouldn't own and seven that we're not sure of. So the 11 that we shouldn't own, what I mean by those are that they are, there's a private structure over top of them, like the Creekside Apartments or the Colleges apartment buildings, those kind of things where there's a structure on top of it, wouldn't make sense for the borough to own those walls. There are seven that are questionable. So at some point, I would like to have a presentation to the borough, start going through that and identifying, we're going to have to start pulling deeds and things, it's going to take some legal work. I'll have to have a discussion with your solicitor and manager on when the appropriate time to start investing that effort is. It's a heavy lift. Of course, we're getting into budget season, and nobody really has extra time for heavy lifts like that, but it is something that I want to keep on our radar, so. Moving on, I gave you an update on the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, so we're super excited that we're finally moving forward with the design of this, something we've been waiting for four years now, using the Federal Lands Access Program grant that the borough received just after 2020. The first step there is to do the scoping field view with PennDOT. We've got our consultant involved, putting together some renderings of improvements we want to do at the square and at the gateway. So I'm looking to present that to Borough Council at your workshop in November. That workshop, we will have our architect from Michael Baker, he's going to be coming in from Pittsburgh for the day to do that presentation. So we're excited to finally get that project kicked off. I gave you an update on the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 Project. That's the one I was saying I was spending a lot of time over the last month with. Of course, the project went a little bit slow in the beginning, but it's normally slow, is how I like the word. You hear me say this a lot. Anytime you dig in the streets in Gettysburg, you find a lot of pipes. We find a new pipe almost every single day that they dig. And anytime you find a pipe that you didn't know was there, you have to kind of stop construction because you're not sure if this metal pipe is an active gas line or an inactive gas line, so you've got to do the investigation each time to determine that. So what Chad noted earlier, whenever he was questioning Robbie there, is that we found some additional electric lines and additional storm drain in Chambersburg Street just yesterday. So we came up with a solution to that. Robbie went and got some pipe this morning, and we'll be band-aiding that corrugated metal pipe. It's an old corrugated metal pipe is what Chad was seeing that they're pulling out of there. Anytime you have corrugated metal pipe, it is completely rotted out, and you've just got to tear it out and you've got to put in a new pipe.
Well, that's what that was.
Yes, it's an old corrugated metal pipe.
That didn't look like it, dang it. That was doing anything with, anything going through it.
Yeah. Water could barely even, yeah, exactly.
Definitely needs to be replaced.
100%. So we have a good path forward there with the solution to that at the current time. And then finally, I gave you an update on the Public Works Facility Master Plan. Charles mentioned that that is in your budget. We're kind of, we've been talking about this for many years, as Charles mentioned. We're finally getting wrapped up with the master planning process, and we're starting to put together actual budgets to how much we think this is going to cost. The next step would be going into design. Real high level, we're thinking next year would be mostly design, and then the following year, we could start getting into construction. So with that being said, I'll go back to the motions that are on your agenda. Both of them were with regards to the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 Project. The first one is just a standard application for payment. There's nothing new or exciting about that. It's their first application for payment, and a little less than 10th of the total project, the total project's a little over $1 million. This application for payment is for about $85,000. So you do have my recommendation to approve that payment. And then the other motion, now, I'll start by saying the second motion, you'll notice in parentheses there, I use the words approve and deny. So you have to pick one, approve or deny. This is, and I worded it like that because this is more of a should, not a shall. You don't necessarily have to replace these sidewalks. It's something where this is kind of a golden opportunity to do it, but it is not absolutely required. In your places, I gave you a two-front and back-page here of some of the specifics of the project, if we want to add these sidewalks. So let me start with, at the bottom of the first page, kind of highlighted the area where these sidewalks would be replaced. And let me first start by saying that this area wasn't originally part of the Gettysburg Interloop Trail System. That's why it wasn't part of the project, and it's coming to you guys as a change order and not as part of the original project. The Gettysburg Interloop was south of the railroad tracks. This piece of sidewalk is north of the railroad tracks. That was added after, whenever the municipal authority decided we wanted to do the water line, we decided to take the water line all the way to the bridge. By taking the water line all to the bridge, you had to replace some pieces of sidewalk where the water line surfaces tie in. Once we started replacing those pieces of sidewalk, we started realizing that these are sidewalks that have those little channels in it, where the roof leaders come down and then the water runs across the top of the sidewalk in these little channels that are not ADA compliant. So I would be remiss if I didn't bring that to your attention. We've been talking about that all the time, about how we were trying to get rid of these little channels that are not ADA compliant. Not to mention, there's other parts of the sidewalks, such as the slope of the sidewalk that is not currently ADA compliant, so about 4% cross-slope, and it's only allowed to be 2% cross-slope. So I'm bringing it to your attention. Currently, the project just has the small five-by-five areas to be replaced where the water line tie-ins are, but the question is, do you want to replace all of the sidewalks while they're here, while they're at it? All of the street is getting repaved, so you would save the expense of having the street cut back to replace the curb. Also, you can see in the cost estimate that I put at the top of my sheet there, I put a line through the item for flagging. That was an alternate item, that if you do this while they're doing the rest of the project, and we don't have to do any flagging, we can save that $15,000. It's actually a typo. It's not, the total isn't 67,399.07 as reflected in the motion. The motion's accurate at 67,399.07. So I just wanted to mention that those are two of the big savings by doing this as part of this project and not as a standalone project. The other thing is, there is a logistics component to replacing, this is about half of a block of sidewalks. By replacing them all at the same time, you can raise the curb line. Currently, there's only about a four-inch curb. If you only did one property at a time, it would be awfully odd to have an eight-inch reveal curb, then back to a four-inch reveal curb. So if you do them all at the same time, you can replace the entire curb line, get all the sidewalks to the same grade, which will allow all of the roof leaders to instead of being dumped across the top of the sidewalk, they could then be run under the sidewalk and to the face of the curb, eliminating all of those little gutters that come from the roof leaders. So there are clear advantages. Again, I gave you some pictures on the backside there. The one other thing I wanted to say is, in the top-left picture on the backside there, there's a small white pipe that's coming out of the side of that White House. That is a sump pump discharge that comes out into DeLapp Avenue. It's causing the pavement to fail, and Public Works had, in the years, put in some cold patch to fill in that little gap. We would fix that at the same time, as well as replacing the alley entrance. The concrete sidewalk across DeLapp Avenue is a borough-owned piece of sidewalk. That is not a private sidewalk because it's part of our alley system, so that would have, that would get the warning domes in our typical ADA access. So that is all I really have to present, unless you guys have any questions for me.
I have a question, Mr. Claybaugh. So just, I can understand better, when you talk about these aren't ADA compliant, and I know this from riding my bicycle along here, they're, I mean, you can, some of them really dip down low and you hit it the wrong way, and you know, you could bounce off. How does that, how is it corrected then? Or is that the one that's going under?
Yeah, yeah. So instead of, whenever the concrete's removed, those gutters would also be removed, and instead of, then the concrete, the pipes from the roof leaders would go under the sidewalk and through the face of the curb.
And then there would be a hole that would come out the curb.
Through the face of the curb, exactly.
Right. Great, thank you. Yeah.
And I failed to mention an important component of this, that the end of the motion is worded, to modify the MOU with the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority to increase their contribution by $33,000. They did vote an hour ago to increase their component, so essentially, that's about half of that $67,000. They've agreed to pay about half of it since there is a stormwater component to this. Now, their motion was contingent on your approval as well. If the borough would not approve this, then their motion would fail, and we would move on with life without replacing these sidewalks.
Yeah, there are a number of compelling reasons to move ahead with this during the construction project, right? There's certain costs that are mitigated when all of the equipment is already on-site, all of the personnel are already on-site, all of the road closures are already scheduled and flagged, and it does make some sense to do this now, instead of doing the street, paving it, and then someday we compel these property owners to do this work, and it would cause, you know, the same disruptions and most likely would damage our new pavement as well, because they'd have to pull these curbs out. So it does make pretty good sense to do this now.
And plus aesthetically, it would, you know, if it's all done at once, it's going to fit in better than kind of piecemealing it together, I think, with maybe different materials and things, so.
Is this about, what, like 80 feet of sidewalk?
Oh, no, it's further than that. I'm going to say it's more like 150 feet.
Okay.
The top-left photo on the back, the white pipe that's the sump discharge, how is that water routed in your plan?
And if you go to the plan view at the bottom, you can see DeLapp Avenue, and there's a bluish pipe coming out the side of 125. We would just run that sump pump into a three-inch PVC, and then you would run that PVC right through the face of the curb, just like all of the roof leaders would.
It would get buried there.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's work our way through the motions, and if there's discussion over this proposal, we can have it done. Would anybody care to make the motion for York Excavating?
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number one to York Excavating Company in the amount of $84,949.95 for the North Washington Street Water and Storm Project as recommended by the borough engineer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Would anybody care to make the second motion? And I would suggest reading it with approve over deny. And then if there's opposition to the amendment, then, you know, that could be communicated through the vote.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number two to the North Washington Street Water and Storm Contract with York Excavating Company in the amount of $67,399.07, and to approve the modification of the memorandum of understanding with the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority to increase their contribution by $33,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for your explanation on that. Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Claybaugh? All right, thank you. Chief Glenny?
Good evening. I have my report.
Would you mind pulling your microphone over? Thank you.
You have my report. A couple of things I'd like to just highlight in here, right on the first page, where we get down through the traffic citation, misdemeanor arrests, felony arrests. I'd like to note that we're about 200 summary traffic arrests over last year to this point already in the year, and we're up in misdemeanor arrests and felony arrests, and felony arrests are equal to this point of the year. Non-traffic citations are equal through September, if they were all of last year. I point that out just to say that our calls are getting somewhat a bit more serious in nature and resulting in more arrests. So we're, when I say we're busy, that's kind of what I'm indicating, and it's something that's a little more time-consuming than it may have been in previous years. The, it's not in here, but we did have the National Coffee with a Cop Day at Bantam Roasters on Stein, where very well attended from both a law enforcement standpoint and from a citizen standpoint. Now, I can't tell you whether our customers usually cycle through Bantam Roasters or not, but we talked to a number of folks down there and actually had a really good time, talked to some kids, and I was very pleased with that. The Adams County Chiefs was very pleased with that, and we are thinking about actually maybe doing more than once a year, definitely every year on the National Coffee with a Cop Day, but maybe bumping that up a little bit and, again, trying to rotate it around the county. I put a blurb in here that I don't usually about some of our traffic grant stuff, and I would just like to highlight something that Barb Zortman, who's the director for the Center of Traffic Safety, said about the department, and I was very pleased and gratified that she wrote this, and I'm quoting an email from Ms. Zortman here, where she said, "I just want to say that we are impressed by the performance and the performance record of Gettysburg Borough PD, along with his eagerness to conduct additional enforcement details above and beyond expectations. Our initial funding allocations are based on crash data, but if it was based on performance records, Gettysburg Borough would be at the top. Your department sets the bar high for others, even those three times its size. We thank you for your invaluable..." We thank you for your invaluable partnership and look forward to working together throughout the next grant year." And of course, it's signed Barb. And I went on there to point out that we put an, over an extra 100 hours in in the month of September, funded, reimbursed-funded through the Center for Traffic Safety, and that's, that's really part of our overall enforcement strategy, and we're really, you know, not necessarily enforcement strategy, but public safety strategy in general, is to get out there and show the colors, fly the flag if you, when people see police cars, they feel safe, so not, not necessarily just with the traffic stops, but they just see, you know, more officers out there. I pointed that out this month, because we are entering a new fiscal year with the state. We start those grants real soon, and because of our performance record, leftover monies tend to get funneled through the borough, through the Center for Traffic Safety, and the officers are willing to work them. So it, it really helps us supplement our patrols and get extra people out, so people can see the police, and, you know, it's probably also a reason traffic citations are up for last year to this point. We did have our range day this year, and officers just completed a, I wanted to put in there that officers just completed a four-hour in-person training from the, the same person that does our monthly legal updates, Chris Boyle, Law Enforcement Consultants, on mere suspicion, reasonable suspicion, and probable cause of three levels, or mere encounters. Just a little refresher on contacting and, and what you need to do to make a case out of those contacts, and, and move on, and also then professional conduct and presenting in court. Very good training, everybody enjoyed it greatly, and got good information. It's good to have Mr. Boyle here, because then they can ask questions, unlike, you know, the monthly training stuff is online, so they can ask the questions at that time. I will say he's very good, if they send him emails, he'll get back to them whenever everything, but it, the guys seem to enjoy it, and will probably keep trying to do something like that going forward each year. We did complete our annual, we shoot once a quarter, but we did complete our annual MOPAC range qualification, so everybody is, is qualified for another year, as far as the state's concerned. Just a busy month, and we're gearing up for Halloween Parade, Remember State Parade, Christmas Festival, trying to make sure that we have everything in place, so I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
I had a question, Chief. Do you attribute the increase last month because of the, the new college year beginning? I saw there were a lot of DUIs and, you know, underage drinking. Is that associated with that, with the opening of the, of the school?
You know, we're pretty consistent, and those things are pretty much the same. I think that, I, I just think we're getting busier. I think that the, the pellet tax that Charles alluded to earlier with Moreheads and Pellos, we're getting more people in town. You know, we're still, you know, I have my opinions, and Destination Gettysburg and Jill are probably much, much more appropriate to answer this, is the amount of people we're getting in town, but I think that Gettysburg, with being a day trip for most of the, you know, the, the East Coast, we're still a big vacation destination and tourist destination because of that, because people aren't taking big trips. So we're seeing a lot of folks coming through. I just, just today, got a note from the President of the New Jersey Chiefs of Police Association was in town, complimenting our officers on professional conduct, and, and seeing them out there and talking, and talking with people. The other thing, and I don't know what made me think this, Patty, but we are starting with the election season, you heard me lamenting a little bit before, we're starting to get busier with, with dealing with differences in people's opinions and things like that, so, and that hopefully will, will end here in three weeks, so that, that's occupying a lot of our time as well, so.
Well, thank you. I just want to add, because I think it's, there was a nice note from Barb that she sent to you, and I just think we, you know, and the borough are very fortunate to have a professional staff, both, you know, in the police department and our other departments as well, and we may not, I know he won't say this, but I know a number of people in the community have spoken out also equally about Public Works and the work that they do, and how the, the staff that worked, works with Robbie, really are, they go over and above as well. So we're really fortunate on many levels, in terms of the professionalism in the police department and Public Works and, and our other departments, so just want to take this time to, I don't know if it's Borough Appreciation Week, but just thank you all, so thank you.
All right, any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
That takes us to the Office of the Manager and the Treasurer, Ms. Stull.
Okay. Shout-out this month to Karen Mesher, who happens to be here tonight on the 21st. She'll have 32 years here at the borough.
Oh.
And that's all I have tonight.
All right, well, thanks for that, that's excellent. Mr. Gable.
In the general fund checking account, $3.8 million, so we're in a good liquid cash perspective. Wanted to follow up a little bit on, a little bit more budget talk, but in, in my monthly report, in the written report, I, I added a section on grants this month, and I must confess, part of the reason I did that is, we have so much going on, it's becoming difficult to track all of it. So I thought I'd start writing it down in a formal report to council, and I'll, I'll keep that updated as we move forward, but I just wanted to, to talk about, while we have noticed a, a decrease in the amount of grant funding, and what I mean by decrease, I mean in the large grants that, you know, the six- and seven-figure grants that the boroughs received, or not received, over recent years, we still do have the benefit of a lot of grant activity, and so currently, approved grants that are currently under adjudication, if you will, are, are active. We have the C2P2 grant for $252,000. That is what's paying a portion of the Washington Street project. Every year, we get a small stipend from the state for recycling, but we also received an Act 101, Section 902 grant, $306,000, and that's going to be helping to cover the costs of the leaf vac truck. Main Street recently, recently got a municipal assistance planning grant for $25,000, and that's associated with the Elm Street District. And of course, every year, we get our CDBG allocation, so 21, 22 funds of $257,000 will be going to curb ramp and ADA construction on the Washington Street corridor, another $129,000 for 2023 funds, $127,000 for 2024 funds. Engineer Claybaugh mentioned, we have an active grant of $800,000 for the Federal Lands Access Program. We also, through the assistance of Main Street Gettysburg, received a community project funding for the construction of the Gettysburg Welcome Center, $1.2 million, and just recently was announced, the borough received an SS4A planning grant for $120,000. SS4A is Safe Streets for All, which will help us develop a master plan for our streets in the borough, and then we will go back to the SS4A for construction dollars, once that master plan is completed. So there's a good story to tell there, and so I thought, we're going to start telling it, because we are very busy, and that's a good problem to have, but we're partly busy because we do a really good job of making sure we're a desirable place to be, and collectively, we, we need to ring our own horn, toot our own horn on that. Cozen O'Connor will appear in your draft 2025 budget. Cozen O'Connor is the consultants that we hired this, this year out of Pittsburgh to help us continue the journey to secure more grant funding in larger amounts, and even though we can't point to that seven-figure award yet, we're beginning to make moves in that direction. So Cozen O'Connor has helped us get audiences with Senator Fetterman's senior staff. We've met directly with Senator Mastriano and his staff locally. Beyond that, Cozen O'Connor presented to us the opportunity for a CFI grant, which is a charging fueling infrastructure grant for additional electric vehicle charging stations in Gettysburg and surrounding areas. We just applied for that grant for $2.216 million. It's a huge grant, and if, if, if we're successful, we're going to get on the national map, if you will, for great electric vehicle-friendly locations to visit, so the rewards for that investment are beginning to make themselves known, so I, I would encourage council to continue through 2025 that relationship with Cozen O'Connor. That concludes my formal remarks.
All right, thank you. So it looks like we have a little spacing issue there, the, there's actually two separate motions there at the very start. Would anybody care to make a motion for the bills and payrolls?
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and then we have the COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Larry Runk to be paid from the police pension plan effective September 1, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I heard Mr. Berger first on that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then we have a motion to appoint Mayor Duzel.
I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare a resolution for adoption by the Borough Council as it, at its November 12, 2024, monthly general business meeting in order to appoint Mayor Duzel, a firm of certified public accountants registered in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as the independent auditor of the Borough of Gettysburg during fiscal year 2025, in order to perform the examination and audit of the accounting records of the borough for fiscal year 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mayor Duzel, of course, is a firm we've used for several years to handle our annual auditing as required, and they've done an exceptional job for us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our liaison reports for the evening, and we'll start with Ms. Sellers and Main Street Gettysburg.
There's lots going on, as everyone has talked about, so I'll go over just a few things. One, the Elm Street program that we do have the planning grant for through DCED is coming together, meaning we are sending out a neighborhood input survey that will go out in English and in Spanish. It can be completed on paper, or it can be completed through a QR code online, but we're going to be taking a look at the old Elm Street overlay district there, the old Gettys Town area, and that will give us an established, some established input from the neighborhood and residents, both property owners and tenants, so that we can start establishing a plan for that neighborhood to go forward in the new year, so stay tuned. On September 24th, we installed 168 bricks on the square. A big shout-out to Zimmerman's Azalea Gardens for their help, as well as Public Works that just steps up every time they are asked to do anything in support of Main Street Gettysburg, so shout-out to Robbie and his crew. Secagahara was mentioned earlier. I was in contact this morning with one of their translators, who was here in July with the delegation, and Park Service Ranger Chris Gwen, who is the interpretation and education ranger, is on his way right now to Secagahara for their annual battle anniversary event week, so, and, so I sent with him the brick certificates and photos so that, and they look forward to returning to see where those were placed on Lincoln Square. So that's, that is an important relationship to maintain, and it does continue to, to propagate. Christmas Festival, in case anybody's asking, is 52 days away. Entertainment is nearly complete for four stages. Sponsors are still needed, so I'm reaching out to businesses. It's time to get involved, participate, find things that you can do there. We're putting ads on the shuttle buses this year. If you want your logo of your business on the shuttle bus that's going to drive around all weekend, please call me. Deadline to be in all the printed materials is November 1st, so please contact me by the end of this month. There's a lot of really good things happening, and we're excited for it, and pray for good weather this year. Gettysburg Welcome Center, lots of things going on. The congressional funding, the $1.27 million is underway, and we are continuing to do the compliance requirements for that, so metal detecting, soil samples, and all sorts of other really fun things that happened on that small piece of property are now being processed through PA State Office of Historic Preservation, and that recommendation hopefully will come within the next 30 days, and then we will know what next steps are. So again, stay tuned, it is a process of patience. That turns us to endowment funding. Since we are fully funded for construction, we are working towards endowment funding to make sure that once it's built, we have money to run it. A big shout-out to the Wareheim Foundation, who has offered us a $100,000 challenge grant. They will match that if we, if we meet that challenge. We are making headway towards that, as well as working with the Giving Spree to meet that as well. We are number 75, so if you don't have one of these, you should, and I have many, so please pick one up before you go. You can mail it in now, you can give online on November 7th, or you can come drop it off at one of five locations around the county, so there's really plenty of opportunity to get involved, not only with Main Street, but with another 100-plus nonprofits that benefit Adams County only. This is a shout-out, quite honestly, if you don't know, the Adams County Giving Spree is the biggest per capita giving day in the nation. This is phenomenal for a county this size, so please participate. Shout-out to Mr. G's Ice Cream. Last Friday, they did a fundraiser for us, so they're sharing proceeds from the day of sales of ice cream, and that will go towards the endowment, the endowment fund as well. And last thing on my list is my other visual aid, so we did, we solicited sponsors and asked for the wayside markers to be replaced. They were installed in 1999, and so 44 markers were sponsored and produced, so 18 of them so far have been installed. So we've gone from this, sorry, to this. I will, I will have that list posted on our website when they're all installed, and I will, I will again thank Robbie ahead of time, who is going to help me with the remaining list that has not been as cooperative as the first 18, so some of them are quite rested in place, so anyway, so thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I do. Did you, can you tell me, you mentioned at the beginning, the Elm Street project, and you're going to be sending something out to get-
Survey.
Survey, out to get information? And how is that survey going out and to whom?
It is going out by mail, and there will be a QR code on that as well, which I can probably also put on the website, but we're, it's going to addresses within the old Elm Street District only. So it's not borough-wide, it's just targeted for the new Elm Street overlay district, so we don't have to have an Elm Street overlay in order to have an Elm Street. So despite the new zoning, we can still have an Elm Street program. They're not one in the same.
So it's being mailed to those addresses?
It's being mailed to those addresses. I believe it's 352 addresses, off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jill?
I have just a comment about the Giving Spree. It was a thought product of a woman named Barbara Ernico, who had traveled to York and observed their Giving Spree, and came up with the idea it would be good for Gettysburg. And the first year, I think we had eight to 10 recipients, and we raised like $20,000. Holy macaroni! And that's how it's grown, and I just think it's astounding. It's because after Barbara's first year, people saw what it could do and how successful, and it inspired people to give, because they made it so easy to give during that time. So the spree is a wonderful thing for Gettysburg, and I appreciate everyone supporting it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill. Gera, Mr. Carr.
I'll just give a shout out. I believe we still have a few more Saturdays for Adams County Farm and Market over at the Rec Park, and also, if you did not hear, we have a new director. Al Moyer is now the Director at Gettysburg Area Recreational Authority.
All right. Thank you. The Municipal Authority, Mr. Berger.
Yes. The big news on the sewer side, we did accept a bid for our interceptor project. It does come in a lot higher than projected, just like a lot of these other projects, but it'll be EK Services, about $3.7 million, and that work should be starting probably in December. Yeah, so there's been work, obviously, on Washington Street that's moving along. I think Chad did say it, a little slow finding stuff underground, but that's moving along. And the Andrews Well, we're just waiting for DEP to approve, to move forward with that project.
Great. Thank you. The bid, Mrs. Butterfield.
Yes, they continue to focus on the Christmas festival and what it could be for Steinware and what they're hoping it will be and what they're working toward. And I just want to say a word of how lucky the bid, Steinware Avenue Business Improvement District, is to have Main Street and Jill Sellers a part of that. And when you sit in their meetings, she always has information for them. She keeps them organized, keeps them moving forward in a cheerful, enthusiastic way. So my compliments to Jill Sellers for her work with Steinware Bid.
Thank you. Did we have anything submitted from ACBA?
No.
No? Okay, so we'll go right to the COG, please.
The, I thought there was one, but then I realized Rita was absent.
Yeah.
They continue to work on the cybersecurity survey of what is needed throughout the county in regard to cybersecurity training and so on. At the PSAB conference, which I just attended this weekend, there were two vendors who specialize in offering cybersecurity training, so I have that contact information, and we'll forward it to the Borough. Cybersecurity is a big deal, and apparently, we are fortunate not to have been hacked to the extent that other municipalities have been attacked.
That is correct. Happy.
Yep. I think I mentioned last month that we were having Happy, the Healthy Adams Bicycle Pedestrian Group, was having its annual fundraising bicycle ride, and that was very, very successful. We had over 100 bicyclists out the end of last month for either 13, 25, or 40-mile rides out in the Borough and beyond. And we had people from, more people from out of the area, out of the county, actually. So it's, we had people from Virginia, Maryland, Philadelphia. I think our furthest away was Arizona. Somebody knew about it and was coming here on vacation anyway. So I think at one point, Happy should maybe have conversations with Destination Gettysburg and maybe even Main Street, because I think the whole idea of bicycle tourism is growing. That's why the Gettysburg interloop is so important, and so it was really great to see. The other thing that Happy is doing, we have tomorrow, we have a meeting with a, it's called the Gettysburg Interloop Art Initiative. This is spearheaded by Tom Jolyn, who is the former founder and president of Happy. He has a lot of vision for the bike loop and bike trail, and he's invited several of us, in fact, will be there tomorrow. Judy Butterfield will be there. Chad Clayball will be there. I think John Whitmore has been invited. I think Charles, you've been invited as well. Tom's invited Sarah Merritt, who's with the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts, Creative Communities and Economy, to talk about what art can, what art can do in terms of community with those bicycle loops, for example. And Lisa Cadigan, who's the Executive Director of the Adams County Arts Council, will be there. I've been pragmatic with Tom because he's got so much enthusiasm, and I want to thank him for his efforts in this, but he understands that the Borough, the infrastructure needs that we are addressing with the Gil and what we're seeing on North Washington Street is our primary focus right now and priority. But I think he's looking, he's forward-thinking, providing vision in terms of down the future with Racehorse Alley and what that might look like in terms of safety, if it's better lit, if there's parks, park benches, if there's art, maybe murals on the wall. So we'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow, so just to give you a heads up.
Great. I love that idea of creating bicycle tourism.
Mm-hmm.
ACTPO.
They meet on the 23rd, their quarterly meeting, and I will attend.
All right. Oh, Mr. Berger?
Nothing.
Nothing for the trail feasibility thing? All right, thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, recycling.
Yes, as has been mentioned this evening, October 19th, coming up Saturday, will be our regular electronic device turn-in, a very popular event. We assign 15-minute time windows so that we do not back up traffic on Middle Street, and I am assigning those times regularly. We had to remove from the website one time window because it was the most popular one, 10:15. Everybody wants to come Saturday at 10:15, so we finally had to shut that time down. But we still have 9:30 to 9:45, and quite a few for the 10:15 to 10:30 timeframe. About every six months, we organize a meeting with our contracted hauler, in this case, Waste Management, to come and discuss recycling and what's permitted and what is allowed. And I've been in contact with them. They are eager to come, and we're going to set up a meeting shortly that is the most convenient for the staff, because we always invite the staff to come and share questions that they've received about the whole recycling project. So stay tuned. That will be publicized.
All right. Thank you. I didn't see the EMS report, but the fire department report was in our packets, and that takes us to elected officials' comments. Would anybody like to speak?
I have one thing, and that is just an update on our ABCs. Mrs. Butterfield and I co-chair the staffing for citizens who have applied and sit on our authorities' boards and commissions. We have about 60 citizens in the Borough. Some of the ABCs, you don't have to have a Borough residency, but we are willing to accept applications and information's on our website. We've now been making a change to the website, so the application for that will be right under the dropdown menu under ABCs. And we do have, there's been one opening this summer on HARB that we are in the process of filling. We have an interview process besides the application. We've had several apps now, and we're interviewing a candidate on Thursday, in fact. So just a public service announcement to the community that if you have any interest in serving on any of these ABCs from planning, zoning, stormwater, HARB, we are happy to accept them, and we look forward to your application. And we rely on the citizenry of the Borough to be able to fill those positions. It's really important. Thank you.
And Ms. Lawson, don't you also keep the old applications for people that you weren't able to find a spot for at that time?
Absolutely.
Well, you do keep them on file.
We keep them on file, and-
And we reach out to them and let them know, hey, there's another spot.
We've now changed the communication, so we let people know that we've received their application, and then if they are not selected, they understand that that application will remain on file.
Being considered.
Yep. And people don't have to, well, we ask you to specify your interests, but people will list multiple ABCs, not just one in particular. And so that's a great way to engage with the community in terms of local government. We welcome them. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Carr.
Please.
Regarding the pension vote that we gave a few minutes ago to former Officer Larry Runk, he was an officer during his active-duty time in the community who really reached out to the citizens, and it was a time nationally when generally, police and communities were not getting along. And he did so much to alleviate, make sure that was not true here in this community. He formed a group called Police and Community Together PAC, and they met monthly in this room. He got a nice turnout, and he would basically give some explanations, as the chief does for us, of what a challenging event coming up, but it was a very good thing, and I'm glad we continue to mention Larry Runk's name. The other compliments that I want to press forward, at this PSAB conference, which I attended last week and this weekend, people frequently came up to me and say, "Gettysburg, I love Gettysburg. I've been visiting there regularly. I visited there as a child." And they all are interested in Gettysburg and praising us, so we need to be sure we always have someone at these conferences to accept these laudatory comments. The other thing was, at this particular conference, several people came up and said, "Gettysburg, you have Charles Gable as your manager. I have worked with Charles on many task forces," they say, "many committees, and you're lucky to have him," and I always concur. And then the other compliment, among the exhibitors, was C.S. Davidson. And when they saw my name tag in Gettysburg, they said, "Oh, Chad Clayball, and you are lucky to have Chad as your representative engineer." And I concurred and agreed with that. So compliments were forthcoming to our staff and our community. That makes it a very pleasant conference to attend.
Anybody else?
All right. I just want to add one thing. Everybody, please mark your calendars. October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is medicine take-back here in Adams County. This is a partnership between local law enforcement, the DEA, and community organizations. Please bring prescription medications, anything that you need to safely dispose of. Bring it on over to the housing authority across the street between 10:00 and 2:00, and they will be collected by volunteers and representatives of the Gettysburg Police Department, and they'll be safely disposed of. They'll be incinerated so that those materials do not end up in the hands of people on the streets or in our landfills and waterways. So medicine take-back, October 26th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Does that include veterinary medicine, too?
It certainly can.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
We've had people bring half a bottle of shampoo. Like, yeah, sure, throw it in, whatever. All right. That takes us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items on the agenda. You may speak on any topic. We do ask that you limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium, and please state your name and address of residence.
So my name is Ted Hurt, and I'm at 241 Baltimore Street, and I realize that I'm asking a question right when you want to adjourn, and my question is on the budget, so I will definitely keep it under five minutes. And I only really have one question for the manager, because I saw all the numbers, and I understand the increase for the police officers and for the new hybrid staff person and for the insurance premium increase. But the one thing I don't understand, and it shows my ignorance of budgets, is we have this very large number for debt servicing, or whatever that title is, but wouldn't that have been a cost that we've been incurring for past budget cycles? All of a sudden, there's this large number of $500,000 for us to reach the 976. So my question is, why hasn't this deficit-creating number appeared in prior budgets?
That is actually an excellent question, and it's one we will delve into as we have our budget discussions. In this section of the evening, though, we are simply taking your comments, so we weren't, we wouldn't engage in a discussion there. But you're right, that's absolutely something we all need to seek to understand over the coming weeks. All right. Is there any other public comment? I don't think so. All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.